All right, I'm gonna call this, oh my gosh, May 2nd, Samamish Planning Commission Meeting in order. It's a beautiful day out there, so I'm glad you guys all made the effort to be in here with us. Let's start out with the roll call. Sayad Safabian.
Here.
Yisham Milkawad.
Here.
Mike Bresko.
Here.
John Bachman.
Here.
Ajay Chakrapani.
Here.
And Commissioner Sinkara has an excused absence. I want to welcome Hong Ying Wang, who is our, actually, Hong Ying Wang, why don't you introduce yourself real quick and tell us why you're here?
Cool. So, starting from this year, the youth board members, some youth board members will be joining commissions as non-voting members, so that the commissions will have a greater youth voice in their decision makings. And so, I guess let me introduce myself very briefly. I'm Hong Ying. I'm a current junior, and I currently attend Eastlake High School. Some of my hobbies include, I guess, some of my hobbies include running with my friends, as well as just video games in general, I'm that kind of kid. Yeah, I'm excited to be working on the planning commission with everyone here.
Great, welcome. Okay, next, let's do the agenda. Any comments about this evening's agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we change the order. New business item number three, the presentation of 2024 Samamish Stormwater Addendum. I'd like to move that to before the old business discussion on development regulations.
Somebody second that?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to reverse the new and old business items to facilitate timing. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed no, thank you. Next, approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, John.
Request to add an agenda item for commissioner reports at the end.
Yep, and we don't really, we're not changing anything there, so remind me when we're two hours from now that we don't close and forget to do a commissioner report. Thank you, John. Next, approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Any comments or corrections from our meeting minutes? That was April 18th. None? Okay, we'll call the minutes approved from the April 18th meeting. Next, let's do our public comment non-agenda. So, as we mentioned a little bit earlier, and I'll remind everybody, the two discussion items for tonight that are on the agenda are development regulation updates that are related to the comp plan update, and then some discussion about stormwater addendum code amendments. So, public comment right now is for anything other than that, three minutes per person. Anybody want to make public comment at the podium? Go ahead, Mary.
Thank you and good evening, and I'm gonna show some stuff, so I don't know if the three commissioners want to turn around or not. Otherwise, I'm gonna show to the back of your head, because I have to stay by the microphone. So, I'm Mary Victor. I've lived in Samamish since 2000, right after the city incorporated. And for a non-agenda public comment tonight, I want to speak about environmentally sensitive, critical areas. Yeah, that's one of the topics that the city has to do this year and have all the code adopted by 2024. So, I happen to live in Tamarack, which on this map is outlined in red. It's about 212 homes done by a survey plat in 1964. Comprehensive subdivision regulations were not in the state of Washington until 1969, and drainage wasn't required till 1977. So, you've heard me speak for a number of years, because we have problems. So, I live right here at the bottom of a steep slope hazard, which is yellow, right next to a blue landslide hazard area. And above me, all the water drains this way. So, this is a strip of 77 houses. There was a mismapping problem where King County and the city never realized that actually drained to a landslide hazard area. So, we got what's called a landslide hazard drainage area, a drains-to area that goes to it. And that got established by 2017, so we're really glad for that. There is a little bit of erosion hazard here, but Tamarack doesn't have erosion over it, it's just landslide. It's one of the few places in the city that doesn't have anything other than the landslide to help it. So, it has landslide, steep slopes, a little bit of erosion, and we have this landslide hazard drainage area. And then Inglewood is from 1889, when Washington was a territory. And these plats actually kind of line up together. So, when the stormwater code was getting done in 2016, so we weren't using the 1998 code anymore, we are vaulting into 2016, this critical drainage area map was developed. And the way it was developed is, they took the orange, which is the landslide hazard area, and the yellow, which is the landslide hazard drainage area or drains-to area, and they made one orange thing. And then you can see there's blue around Pine Lake and Beaver Lake. And that's because those lakes are sensitive, and we're gonna take care of them too. So, these are kind of the areas of concern in the city that you really want to be careful doing things with. And you can see Tamarack's drawn in here, and Inglewood's drawn in here, because there's really only two old historic plats. And then, as I've spoken before, the steep slope hazards map is actually sort of now online if you use the Samamish Property Tool, and it's in the current comp plan with these gray slopes area. But steep slopes are only part of geologic hazards. The landslide hazard is dark red, and the erosion hazard is orange. So, my request tonight, as I spoke about critical areas, we don't want anything to happen later in the meeting that would wipe out any of the code for historic plats, for landslide hazard areas, erosion hazard areas, or steep slope hazard areas, which are geologically hazardous. And those are critical areas. You need to identify them, designate them, and protect them. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody else for non-agenda that's in the room?
Yeah, Kent Train, Samamish City. So, my wife was on her way here to actually speak, and she's stuck in Redmond in all the traffic. And so, I don't exactly know what it is that she was gonna say, because I'm smart enough to stay away from that one. But what I would say, though, is as I sport my Wildlife Corridors Can Happen hat, I just want you to be aware of, as a resident of Samamish who owns property that is a, was at the time designated by King County prior to 1999, was a wildlife corridor. And so, I do have wildlife bears, cougar, I've seen bobcat, deer, deer birth on my property, actually, almost every year or every other year, we've seen that happen. And it's just amazing what transpires with the wildlife on our property. And the way I look at it is, they're going, the animals, right, not human animals, but the animals, the wildlife, are going from the lake to the lake to the lake. And so, the idea of having a corridor, they exist. Whether we think they do or not, they do exist. The animals are moving on these corridors that are throughout the city. And so, as a resident of someone who's trying to preserve those corridors, or would like to preserve those corridors, it would be nice if on your futures map that you lay out wildlife corridors and that interface that actually is required by King County. The interface is already, for wildlife, is already required or is being asked that we actually look at it and consider it as we're putting out our futures plan. And so, the idea would be, if we're gonna separate out the two maps for the comp plan, one that's the more detailed and the zoning one, but we have this futures map, what are we gonna look like in the future? One of the things we should at least consider is that the wildlife corridors are there. I am, I'm currently working on with city staff to get mapping of that, so that you can have a concrete visual of it, similar to what Mary Victor does. I'm a visual person too, so I like the maps. And so, if we can show where those are, that'd be really great for you guys to take a look at and for the council to also consider during this comprehensive plan update. Thank you very much for your time. And I apologize, my wife probably won't be here, so I'm imagining she could send that to you in a letter or an email? Okay. Or would she be able to speak if she shows up in 10, 15 minutes?
Technically, no. However, she could send it in writing and come to our next complan, um, next.
Next meeting.
Because we're always looking for and welcoming people to make public comment.
Correct.
Even council members.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else in the room? Okay, how about online?
One hand raised online, Mr. Stickney. I'll go ahead and promote you.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Paul Stickney, Samamish. He enjoyed Mary Victor's and Kent Train's comment. On a recent seminar I heard from Western Washington University, they talked about wildlife as being considered autonomous vectors. Very interesting concept. If you want to talk to me more about that, it's sort of cool. Tonight, I'm talking a little bit about the past and the future in regards to the comp plan. As you know, I've made recommendations to increase units in town center, add some units to Eastman, and plan for the entire city, all areas, really well over the next 10-year cycle. Add to Town Center and Eastman now, and in the future, add to all those areas. I'd like to go back about six years a little bit to the, to the Planning Commission in Samamish Homegrown that was done from late 2017 till early 2019. There are three meetings in particular in support of what I'm suggesting for our community as a benefit to virtually everything that makes up the community. And those meetings were held on June 7th, 2018. There was an industry panel about a two-hour meeting. You can find these on the civic web. Really worth watching. Five people came in and spoke. Quite amazing, actually. Then, on July 5th, 2018, and July 19th, 2018, the Planning Commission voted 7-0 to advance a homegrown policy to city council that ultimately, over the series of several months, parts of it were withdrawn that I'm gonna read on a four-to-three vote initially, that ultimately got five-to-two support from the council to take these things out. But I'd like to read to you four things from that 2018 plan. Future projects and housing needs should demonstrate clear and compelling need and public benefit. Next. Require all sub-area plans, town center plan, commercial centers, be developed or evaluated with the next comprehensive plan, and that's the one we're in, including housing balance as well as regional growth, both. Third, increase production of multifamily and condos. And fourth, focus on multifamily and condos in centers and not much in residential neighborhoods. So, I encourage you to watch those meetings. Excellent opportunity to get housing supplies optimized to meet needs over time. Appreciate the chance to speak. Have a great evening.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else online?
No more commenters.
Okay, let's move on. Remember that we, actually, first, let me just mention for anybody watching and wondering why we're sitting like this instead of at the dais. We are attempting to, in meetings that are more work sessions and less formal, we're gonna try some different configurations, just to create things in a manner that's a little bit more work together and face-to-face, and not quite so formal. So, when we have formal issues at the end, we'll be up on the dais. And for things that are not as formal, we may try a few of these different configurations. Okay? So, let's try this and see how it works, see if we like looking at each other face-to-face. And don't worry, you're still on cable television on all these cameras, so, in case you were worried about being famous, other than on TikTok. Okay, so, we're gonna move to our presentation of the 2024 Samamish Stormwater Addendum Code Amendments, and I think Lisa's gonna introduce this, right?
I am. Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Lisa Weir, engineering technician in the Public Works Department. And the city's consultant, Wayne Carlson, and Helen Stanton with HBL will be presenting our proposed amendments to the Samamish Addendum of the King County Surface Water Design Manual. So, with that, I'll let Wayne take it away.
Great. Thank you. So, thank you again. We've got a short, just a presentation overview of the proposed amendments to the Samamish Addendum. So, we've got, we'll kind of begin with just kind of the project background and purpose, begin with kind of rolling through what those amendments look like, and then discuss with you next steps. Next slide? So, I, even though the image is small, and I'm sometimes seeing just the sides of your faces, I, many of you look familiar from last year. So, I wanted to let you know that, but there might be a few new folks. So, the city, there, the city stormwater code, the Samamish stormwater code adopts the 2021 King County Surface Water Design Manual to meet the National Pollute and Discharge Elimination System, or what's known as NPDES permit requirements. And so, it, some of you have heard Lisa and I talk about this in the past. The NPDES permit is a municipal stormwater permit that's issued under the auspices of the Clean Water Act. And it's something that is technology-based, and just like the Clean Air Act, meaning that the, and the legal standard for the Clean Water Act is the maximum extent practicable. So, what is considered, say, impracticable, and yes, I'm kind of using a, that word practicable, which is kind of a, sometimes a challenge kind of coming off the tongue, but today might be actually considered entirely feasible and practicable five years from now. So, these permits last a period of five years. And so, with the most recent permit, the city adopted the King County 2021 Surface Water Design Manual. Now, the city also has historically, though, adopted an addendum to the King County Surface Water Design Manual to customize the manual to reflect localized conditions and preferences. So, that's kind of the, what we're talking about today. The city has adopted the King County Manual, but based on some of the characteristics that, for instance, Ms. Mary Victor spoke about during her presentation, and other local characteristics, the city has customized it through the adoption of what's known as the Samamish Addendum. Next slide? And so, here this evening, we want to run through with you five proposed amendments to the Samamish Addendum that we are proposing this year. The proposed amendments are, have been initiated by staff and address local issues and scenarios that kind of seem to routinely occur within the city by, through development proposals, both either publicly or privately initiated. Next slide? So, this is kind of an overview, and then we'll hit each of these five individually. So, the first one was to reduce restrictions on bioretention underdrains. The second was to examine and allow for dispersion devices within the setbacks, at the toe of the setbacks of sloped areas. Of the third was the application of permanent signage on rain barrels. The fourth, prohibiting shared LID facilities. And then the fifth, clarifying infiltration rate testing procedures. Next slide? So, the first, so the first item that we wanted to introduce was a modification to the addendum that would reduce some of the restrictions on bioretention underdrains. So, the King County Surface Water Design Manual currently prohibits bioretention with underdrains unless approved through a stormwater design manual adjustment. So, consider that, you know, and in, within kind of a land use parlance, it's like a variance. So, it's called an adjustment to the Surface Water Design Manual. So, city staff periodically receives applications for Surface Water Design Manual adjustments for the installation of underdrains within bioretention facilities. And so, the city is proposing to adopt ecology standards which allow for underdrains for bioretention without requiring, you know, applicants to justify that through an administrative adjustment process. It's not that they don't have to still demonstrate the engineering feasibility and why they need to use a, an underdrain, but it doesn't require the administrative process associated with facilitating an adjustment. And one of the things I, you know, maybe failed to mention, could you, yeah, stay on the slide, sorry, is that the King County Surface Water Design Manual, under the NPDES permit, is considered to be technically equivalent to the ecology manual. So, the ecology manual under the state's NPDES permit is considered, you know, kind of best available science and the way that, to which the standards within that permit are implemented. However, certain manuals, such as the King County Manual, are considered technically equivalent. And so, King County requires this kind of extra step for an underdrain. And the city would, you know, is proposing to eliminate that extra step since in the ecology manual, an underdrain is allowed without an adjustment. Next slide?
Before you go to the next slide, could you define underdrain for us a little bit?
Sure, sure. I, I, if at all possible, maybe I can try to pull something up, or Helen can, after we do the, because it's not within the body of the PowerPoint, but we can show a separate drawing through a kind of a separate screen share, if that works for you.
Sure.
Okay, okay. So, we'll definitely go back to number one and show you what we mean by an underdrain. And then I'll also explain with the use of them as well. So, dispersion devices, setback for steep slopes. And the King County Surface Water Design Manual stipulates that dispersion devices aren't permitted within 50 feet of a steep slope hazard area, erosion hazard area, or landslide hazard area. This, this standard, you know, may unnecessarily restrict dispersion facilities in areas where such facilities would be effective and safe. So, the city's proposing an amendment that would allow dispersion devices adjacent to the toe of a slope where approved by a geotechnical engineer or engineering geologist. And that dispersion would be away from the steep slope area. So, it would be at the base, not, not, you know, at the top of a steep sloped area that would facilitate, you know, kind of any erosion or landslide hazard area, or landslide hazard action. Okay, next slide? The, the third one is the application of permanent signage on rain barrels. So, there have been a couple of instances where property owners have unwittingly removed rain barrels which were installed to meet the city's stormwater regulations to facilitate, for instance, the construction or the installation of air conditioning units or other home improvements. And so, what the city is proposing is to include a new standard stipulating that rain barrels, which may be required as a condition of, say, engineering approval, must be labeled as permanent stormwater facility, stormwater facilities that may not be removed. So, we don't want to, obviously, remove a facility that was otherwise needed to meet the engineering, the city's engineering and stormwater standards. And we don't have any evidence that any of this was ever done purposefully, but we want to make sure that these, that these, that these facilities aren't, you know, inadvertently being removed. Next one? Okay, number four, prohibiting the shared use of LID facilities across lot lines. So, staff has concern that where LID facilities, and what we're, in most instances, talking about would be like in this image here, would be like bioretention facilities or rain gardens, where they are shared across a lot line, sometimes it's difficult to enforce the management and maintenance of the LID facility. You know, maybe each neighbor is thinking that the other one is doing something that maybe they aren't doing. So, staff is proposing to amend the addendum to prohibit the sharing of LID facilities between adjacent properties. Meaning, say, a single-family home could still use an onsite stormwater facility, such as a rain garden, but it'd be solely upon his or her property. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't straddle a lot line between, between two homes such that each property owner maybe believed that the other one was responsible for maintenance. Next slide? And then finally, number five is clarifying infiltration rate testing procedures. So, the, the, the King County Surface Water Design Manual and really kind of talks about the methods by which a, an applicant assesses the infiltration capacity of a site's underlying soils. And there are a variety of kind of testing procedures out there, some of which are more or less accurate. So, there is a falling head test procedure, which is similar to what, say, a designer of, say, an onsite sewage disposal facility, or someone who's designing a septic system, might use. There is a, an infiltrometer test. So, there are various tests, but, but the ecology, or excuse me, the King County Surface Water Design Manual essentially specifies that any project with over 10,000 square feet of impervious surface area, or excuse me, more than 10,000 square feet of impervious surface area, and, you know, kind of a quarter acre of, sorry, I'm turning, three-quarters an acre of impervious surface and less than, or in more than an acre of tributary area, has to use what's known as a pilot infiltration test or a pit test. And the reason being is, it is by far the, the most accurate test for really mimicking how those soils will perform. It's, and so, so right now, what this proposed amendment would address is smaller sites, sites that would fall below that, that 10,000 square feet of impervious area, or less than 5,000 of feet of pollution generating impervious surface, and require that a pit test be used in those instances if, in fact, there was some sensitivity with the, with the, with the underlying site. Now, this, allowing of this, or requiring this more stringent testing procedure would not allow for infiltration to occur on any site where heretofore it's not allowed. So, it only specifies a more accurate and more detailed testing procedure on sites where infiltration is allowed, but, but in, or smaller than that threshold currently, where everything greater than 10,000 square feet requires the pit test. Next slide? So, our next steps, and, you know, obviously, today, we're here for your work-study session. We intend to hopefully be back on two weeks from today for a public hearing, and then to hopefully advance this to the city council for public hearings in the month of June, on the 4th and 18th. So, that was our last slide. Hopefully, Helen can pull up the, a drawing, and we can, maybe even, while she's doing that, if there are other questions that maybe Lisa Weir and I can, can address while Helen pulls that up, and then I can, we can kind of pivot, and we can show you what we mean by underdrain.
Okay, thanks, Wayne.
Yeah.
I think if you guys happen to have the packet, it might be page 70.
Yeah, yeah, yep. So... Yeah, if you, oh, perfect, yep. And thank you, Helen. So, do you see, within that mineral aggregate, there is an underdrain pipe in this scenario? there is an under uh, drain pipe in in this uh, scenario. And uh, that underdrain is used on sites that have uh, pretty low infiltration rates typically less, you know, between point three and point six inches per hour. Uh, so if it's less than uh, or if it's more than uh, point six inches per hour, it's, it generally is deemed that uh, an underdrain is uh, is not necessary. Um, and uh, and if uh, it is uh, greater than, uh, or excuse me, and if it's less than point three, it's considered not to really infiltrate at all. And so uh, the, and and the reason that underdrain is, it it just to maybe get into the design just a little bit, there's also guidance as to where the, the underdrain goes vis-à-vis the, the very bottom of that aggregate. And so if if, in instances where you do actually have a little bit of uh, uh, infiltration capacity, but it's just not going to infiltrate quick enough uh, to to deal with the storm, you want that uh, that underdrain up six inches. And so, the, the way these uh, the bio retention facilities work is they, they can, they, i- ideally, they will achieve both uh, water quality benefits, meaning that uh, the bioretention soil mix, that that eighteen inches that you see um, and and maybe Helen can put the little circle there. That, that, so there's a bioretention mix that info, that uh, that treats the storm waters, it kind of flows through. That mineral aggregate is the storage. And if the, the uh, site infiltrates really well, you don't need an underdrain, it will, it will drain. However, if it doesn't drain so well, you might need an underdrain, otherwise it's going to fill up and then kind of uh, top back over. So you, so if, if, if the, the area under, underneath the bottom of the uh, underdrain uh, between that and the, the base of the, the, the bottom of the aggregate, that six inches is what you would get credit for, for uh, storage or flow control. So think about the, the fact that when you're, when you're addressing stormwater, you're doing kind of two things. You're trying to manage uh, the, the flow off the site, so you're not flooding downstream property owners. And you're also trying to treat the stormwater so that it's cleaner uh, after it leaves your site than um, and 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 picking up and and cleaning those pollutants that might be coming off uh, uh, pollution generating impervious surfaces. So these facilities do a great job of both. But sometimes the underlying soils don't uh, work quite as well for the, the flow control. And so you need a uh, an underdrain. And so that's what we mean by uh, we, we can kind of tell based on uh, the infiltration rate tests, what that uh, what that is uh, what that infiltration rate is and what we uh, and and so it, it makes sense to allow for underdrains and and not to necessarily uh, need to require an adjustment uh, for those uh, where we know that they make sense.
Does that answer your question, John?
Yeah, I think the short story is you're increasing capacity and and infiltration to avoid going through the overflow structure.
Correct, correct.
Okay, who else has questions or comments for Wayne? Or I guess Lisa, go ahead, Agy.
Okay. Thank you so much Wayne for the presentation. Uh, first of all, can you hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay, great. Can you go back to slide number six? I had a question on that.
Sure.
Yes, so this one was where uh, we were basically looking at the stormwater design manual. And uh, we said that we'll adopt, or rather, the proposal is that we will adopt the ecology standards um, without the administrative steps of a stormwater design manual for it, right? Uh, adjustment. Is, 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 is it because it's redundant? Or is there, is there a possibility that we would have something that is specific for King County with the water structure that is over here, that would need uh, us to have that at all? Um, and not consider that as redundant?
I'm not entirely sure I understand. Are, are you saying that that uh, something specific to King County that's different from ecology?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, uh, no, uh, i- I, I guess uh, what we're, what we're, what we're saying is the, 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 the language of the ecology, these uh, bioretention standards, the, the real science, uh, if we were to say, put back up that, that uh, section is in the bioretention soil mix. And that bioretention soil mix, that eighteen inches of bioretention soil mix really is very similar whether you're in, say, King County or other parts of Western Washington. It sometimes will be customized depending on the pollution, the pollutant that you're trying to uh, to, to, to treat. Um, but uh, no, I, 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 I don't think so. The reason uh, that, that we, you know, want this language is to kind of uh, you know, it, 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 it's kind of an unnecessary um, kind of burden for, of, of both uh, the applicant and city staff to approve something that is uh, yeah, pretty straightforward and 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 technical for one. Um, so the, 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 the language that ecology puts in its manual is that, that they, that they don't recommend uh, underdrains uh, you know, except for situations between point three and point six inches uh, an hour of uh, uh, infiltration rates of the underlying soils. And they say, if you were going to do it, like, say, the, the city of Sammamish, uh, make sure you put together a drawing so people understand what you mean when you say uh, you know, this is our uh, intention of, you know, where the underdrain might go. And uh, and and so, you know, when, when we would come back uh, for uh, for a public hearing, we would have uh, this drawing on on city title block and the other uh, associated notes that would accompany it. But it, but the, but the science itself, I, I guess, to get back to your question, between uh, ecology and um, King County, it, it, it really is the same. And that's why uh, the King County Manual is considered a essentially a technical equivalent to the ecology manual. So the ecology manual is the, the one manual that really is referenced in the, the various uh, two uh, permits for Western Washington, the one for large cities like Seattle and Tacoma. And uh, the, the permit for essentially everybody else, which is known as the phase two permit. And so uh, a- and then so King County has uh, e- essentially done its own uh, functionally equivalent manual. But there are just some uh, e- ever so slight differences here and there that sometimes uh, local communities like Sammamish or others uh, choose to, to modify to make maybe uh, more in line with the ecology requirements just for ease of administration.
I see. And so it's not in the, it's not the other way. It's actually making it more towards, towards ecology and not try to like, apply it on, I mean, deviated from ecology is what you're saying.
No, no, yeah, this is not a deviation from ecology. And it's something that the, the city uh, occasionally it gets requests for already today uh, for an underdrain.
I see.
So it's really just trying to remove an administrative hurdle.
Got it, got it. Thank you. That was, that was great. Can we go to slide number seven? Okay, so this one was where you uh, talked about it as uh, once again, uh, steep slope. I had this in my head, uh, just now I lost it. Can we go to slide eight? Oh no, sorry. Let's go back to slide seven. I remembered what it was. Yes, so uh, we have this thing, this is where, you know, uh, an amendment to pro- dispersion at the top of the slip where it dispersion would be away from steep slope hazard areas. Has this taken into account the kind of rain and uh, El Nino and other things that we've, so we've had in the recent past where there has been a lot more draining and a lot more water flowing through than what we've done, or sometimes less than what we had expected? Has this, this will still apply when, when we consider that, uh, those situations as well? Am I right about that?
Yeah, it, y- you're correct. And, and also uh, the, we are not proposing, uh, the city's not proposing an amendment that would uh, disperse stormwater across a uh, a steep slope hazard area. What the, the way the, the way the standard currently reads is that um, dispersion devices aren't permitted within fifty feet of a steep slope hazard area. So imagine you have a steep slope, you have both the, the top and the bottom. So you have the top and the, you have the top and the toe. And uh, you certainly want to stay at least fifty feet, uh, you know, from the top. Uh, because uh, you uh, infiltrate stormwater into the, the top of the slope and you could get uh, a situation where you have uh, these uh, these slopes erode uh, and slide and uh, you know, cause all sorts of problems. But at the toe, especially if that stormwater uh, is being dispersed, uh, again, away from uh, the steep slope hazard areas, uh, that the city uh, the, the city stormwater uh, manager, you know, uh, contends that, that there are instances where uh, uh, that, that this standard restricts facilities which would be uh, both effective and safe, that the drainage wouldn't be directed to the slope uh, and would be kind of on the kind of the, the downhill side and 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 traveling away from it. And so uh, uh, it, it's really to, to get some for, uh, relief from it, uh, from the toe of the slope uh, for drainage that's being directed away from the steep slope.
Right. So if that makes sense, then why not use that as an empirical formula itself? Why are we saying that they're approved by a geotechnical engineer or an engineering geologist? Because it makes sense. You don't want to make it, like you said, fifty feet. If I had a, if I had a slope of fifty feet, you don't want me to have it at the top. You'd rather have it at the toe, and that makes total sense. Why is there an approval by geotechnical engineer and, or engineering geologist? Do you still think that there'll be possibilities where you wouldn't have to change that?
Yeah, I, well, I'm not a, I'm not an uh, a, a geotechnical engineer, but there are, you know, some you know, sometimes geotechnical uh, uh, you know, engineers uh, you know, may have some uh, concern, I don't know, that, that perhaps maybe there's some, some just natural sloughing that occurs off of a, a hill. And, and, and they could say, uh, you know, we don't recommend you do a dispersion of facility uh, in this location. Maybe not because of any concern that uh, for the, the, the hillside itself, but a concern that if, if the uh, the facility is prone to or excuse me, if the, the hillside is prone to some sloughing, that that dispersion facility could get clogged um, by these natural processes. So i- the idea is just to have a, a, a geotechnical engineer or a engineering geologist look at this and, 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 you know, provide their uh, kind of expert stamp in that way.
Got it. And my last question is on slide nine. Okay, so here, uh, let's assume that me, I and my neighbor have the LID facility shared. And you're basically saying, let's not share that it is very difficult to enforce the management and maintenance of the LID because now you don't know if me or my neighbor are going to do that, management of that, and that it could fall in a no man's responsibility along the way. Did I read that right?
That's pretty, yep, that's correct. And we, we've experienced this um, quite a bit. Uh, we do have facilities that are currently shared and um, sometimes people just aren't neighborly. And so they don't work together to ensure that a facility that is on lot twelve that services lot twelve, thirteen and fourteen is maintained. And in the worst case scenario, we've seen lot twelve rip the system out and um, you know, build a koi pond or put in something that is unpermitted. And then inadvertently, lot thirteen and fourteen have lost their drainage. So this is really the impetus behind um, prohibiting these shared facilities. We want you to manage your drainage on your lot. And that way, there's no room for question and whose responsibility it is for maintenance and longevity.
That's great, because that explanation, which says that, you know, you have to manage yours on your lot
Yes.
Is, i- is, is it possible that we'd add that language to make sure that there is no confusion about this? Because I was like, what does this mean? Just twelve, thirteen, fourteen? What would happen to twelve, thirteen and fourteen? And how do we differentiate them? But what you gave me as an explanation answered all the questions that I was going to ask you right now.
Oh, great.
So if you could add that language here, that'll be fantastic, because I'm pretty sure other people have the same question.
And there is some language similar to that, and we can find that and provide it in the code itself is, as far as the definition of low-impact development and what, and what it means is being the preferred and desired um, use of drainage to manage your storm, stormwater on your parcel. So that um, that language is um, currently in, in the code. It's, it wouldn't, it's not in this section, but that's something that we could certainly um, consider and, and toss around uh, a, a way to, to add that in and, and bring back to you at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How about you, John? Let's go to you.
I had to follow on to Ajay's question on LIDs. So Lisa, this wouldn't apply to, say, uh, a development where they'd create a tra- separate tract that would have the bioswale facility.
It would, because we're also experiencing problems with those types of facilities. Um, and they're crossing the, the cul-de-sac road with a pipe to, to put all of lots twelve, thirteen and fourteen in a shared track that lots twelve, thirteen and fourteen don't know exist over there on that shared track. And if the plat condition is that they're to maintain that facility over there on unknown tract. And, and they don't even know because they've, they've never looked at the front of the plat. So this would actually um, refer to those types of situations as well.
So I'm, and I have no idea an answer to this question is. So you're going to subdivide property with fifteen lots, and we're going to have fifteen different LID facilities?
And we're trying That is, that is absolutely correct. That's what's we, that's what we have now. We have close to, we have over eight hundred LID facilities um, on single-family lots currently. This creative shared LID um, facility situation we've only start to see in the last few years. And as you probably know, LID became a thing in, in two thousand and sixteen. And so um, back then, we only had a hundred and forty lots with um, with a, a low-impact development. And because, as I mentioned, it's stated in the manual as um, the, the preferred and commonly desired uh, drainage way to hand, to manage your stormwater on your lot. Um, the developers understood that it was a way for uh, runoff from your home to be managed on your lot. And over time, developers have found a way to get creative with that and share more than one LID facility for more than one lot, or as you just mentioned, put it in a tract. And um, we've just experienced the problem as um, as the manager and maintenance of, of or, or as, as the manager of inspecting these facilities, we've just come to realize that, you know, folks are ripping these out. They're not maintaining them. They don't know that they exist. And so over the last few years, we've realized that uh, the, the sharing of these was not the intent of a low-impact development um, facility. And, and it's not working out. And so we need to stop this before it gets um, further out of control. Cause as I've mentioned, we have a good few handfuls of issues with these shared facilities, which is one of the reasons why the amendment is in front of us. We're just, it's, it's become um, really administratively unmanageable. And um, we end up in code enforcement, which is no place where anybody wants to land.
John, can I just ask, were Hugh talking about what's in that picture there? Or a community retention pond? I mean, I, I'm not sure what you were asking about, but when you said that, I was picturing several areas I know of where there's a community retention pond, which I don't know that I would categorize that as.
That is not a low-impact development drainage facility. That is, okay.
Fusing that too.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I didn't understand. No, a stormwater pond for a residential community or a stormwater facility uh, vaults or, or even these rain gardens that you see here that are put in a community park. Um, there, there, there will always be the shared uh, development uh, residential facility. Different than a low-impact development facility.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, Sean, how about you?
On the same page, can you help me understand just a little bit about these rain barrels that some owners are removing?
I can. There is a suite of options for I can, there is a suite of options for a low impact development drainage facilities based on everything that Wayne kind of talked about earlier, based on whether we're talking about doing dispersion or infiltration. And a rain barrel is one of the options that is given to our homeowners and our developers that want to build in Sammamish. And there was a a small development that chose to do rain barrels as their drainage their 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 LID facility, which was fabulous. The little community had had them all installed on these wonderful cement pads. And those cement pads also worked great for air conditioners. And an air conditioning company came through that development and said, you, you and you, all of your neighbors are going to get a great deal today for buying an air conditioner, because you have a wonderful pad out back, I'll just move that barrel and place an air conditioner right there. And we're going to give you a cut deal, because we don't even have to place a pad for you. And everybody signed on and did that, not realizing that they were removing a drainage facility. So we ended up having some really tough and difficult conversations, because air conditioner is not cheap to install. And, you know, our code compliance officer actually had this idea, why can't we mark these rain barrels as a permanent fixture? And because we were coming to you folks with some other amendments, we found it is a great opportunity to throw this one in as well. We liked the idea, and so here we are with it.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Sayad, yes.
Okay, let's start with the easy one. What happened if these drainage facilities are in easement? Who's responsible for maintenance?
The, these are all private drainage facilities, so they they are always maintained by the homeowners. If we happen to have a public easement over that facility or through that facility for some reason, leading to the residential stormwater pond or something. You know, I have not encountered that situation where we have actually allowed a low impact development facility in an easement. I'm sure that it's possible that it could be done, although permanent structures are not allowed in easements. So I don't think that we would actually allow that, now that I'm thinking through that.
So you're saying that if there isn't an easement for any kind of utilities, you don't know if you're going to be asking for?
I don't want to say one hundred percent sure for sure. I would have to definitely do a little bit of research and get back to you on that. I would, I would say in a drainage easement, I know we don't allow permanent structures, but I I don't know about other easements, so I would have to do some research and if I could, report back to you on that question.
So I heard, we heard from Mr. Carlson that staff recommends adoption of twenty twenty-one King County. How often King County updates their standard?
They do, they do it at least every five years with each new permit. Sometimes there are periodic updates in between. And so I I believe they are working on a a twenty twenty-five manual.
I think they're doing some amendments first.
Yeah, they're doing some amendments first, but yeah, and and sometimes they they do even periodic amendments that don't actually change the title, where it just becomes almost like a rata or a kind of a slip sheet. And so, yeah, right now, the 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 latest manual is still referred to as the twenty twenty-one King County Surface Water Design Manual.
So if they're going to adopt it in next year, so are we going to go through this process again next year?
You you may, one of the things I've I've kind of mentioned from time to time is that because, as I mentioned, that the Clean Water Act is one of these technology-based pieces of environmental legislation. It's such that Lisa and and the stormwater crew will be before you at least every five years with you know, kind of large scale potential amendments. And and then periodically, just to to tweak things. So we've been before you, I think, three times in the last five years. And and some of its little housekeeping things and and the one about five years ago was much more substantial.
Are they national standards and state standards? And we heard about Department of Ecology and the King County, are they consistent, are they different? Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So the, so this all emanates out of the the Federal Clean Water Act, which was adopted in, I believe, nineteen seventy-two, so it's now over fifty years old. And through the the Federal Clean Water Act is administered by the US EPA. Okay, and the US EPA, though, delegates a local authority to essentially like forty-six out of the fifty states. I think there's four states that either don't want to do it and just have the EPA do it. But Washington, here in Washington, it's done by the Department of Ecology. And so the Department of Ecology, when it's writing its permits, they are bouncing stuff off of EPA as well. Because this is, this is a federal permit. And the reason the city want wants and needs to stay compliant with its municipal stormwater permit is the the Clean Water Act, kind of like the Clean Air Act, anybody can, anybody can sue, anybody kind of has standing. So you don't have to be someone who, you know, kind of lives near, say, Lake Sammamish to it it could be a group of environmental attorneys, I don't know, from New York. And so to have the protection of the and and so the the permit, you know, after these these permits are issued, they are considered to and they've gone through, you know, the 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 local appeal processes, those are considered to to be to be valid. And so with any, then what local permittees and Sammamish is referred to as a permittee need to do is they need to then comply with the permit. And part of that, complying with the permit, means they develop a stormwater program, which includes enforcement, it includes education. And, you know, maybe most importantly, at least for tonight, includes adopting a stormwater management manual. And so here in this, in Western Washington, that manual that's that's referenced in the permit is the the ecology manual. But a lot of communities in King County have kind of kind of worked together to design a King County manual that that maybe talks a little bit more about conditions that are specific here in 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 King County. And so so it it's it's really important that that the city maintain its compliance with the permit so that it's not subject to third-party lawsuits.
I didn't hear that much about the, I don't know if it makes that much of a difference as far as soil type. For instance, one area you may have a compacted soil. Therefore, the infiltration requirements may be different than if it is a softer one. Can you elaborate on the type of soil, how that would affect the infiltration and the pond and?
Yeah, I'll give you, I'll give you just a a the real kind of thumbnail of this, because we could, you know, Lisa, Helen and I could probably go all night and kind of talk about that. But but essentially, the manual has a a whole bunch of different, what they call best management practices. Certain practices are suitable for soils that infiltrate, and so some are not. And and so and and so there there are, as as you kind of correctly pointed out, a variety of different soil conditions from from a till that is essentially like concrete to 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 soils that infiltrate, you know, a fair bit better. And 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 one of the things that that is kind of a a real important thing to remember with respect to 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 LID is that it's not a one-size-fits-all process, it's a you you select techniques and and practices that are suitable for the site that you are designing to. And so and and so there are what they call infusibility criteria associated with all of the different practices. And so, because one of the things we don't want to do is to have someone be required to do bioretention or say pervious pavement on a site that it it's completely inappropriate for and and it won't work. Because that would be a, you know, an engineering failure and anyway, so 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 I guess, yes, there's a a variety of different soil types and you know, some are are, you know, better for bioretention, some, you know, are perfect for, say, a pond or a vault or 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 a rain barrel, like Lisa was showing. And so it 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 really depends on the the underlying soils, how much impervious surface you're dealing with, whether it's a pollution generating a pervious surface that needs treatment or considered a, you know, a clean one. So there's a a whole bunch of different criteria that you kind of consider as you as you design a site.
And the last question about the groundwater level, does it play a role?
Groundwater?
Groundwater level, yeah.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, you need a certain amount of separation from the bottom of, say, one of these facilities. So if you have high groundwater, you are not doing the bioretention, for instance, that was depicted on the this slide that that Helen showed.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mike?
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions, primarily, at least starting with the the second proposed amendment about dispersion devices. Lisa, you described really well for the rain barrels and you know, a couple of the other proposed amendments, the purpose. So what's the purpose of making the amendment for this?
I can, yeah, I can kind of jump in here. This really kind of came from from Toby, the city stormwater engineer, but that they they they, Toby has seen a a variety of requests for the the design and installation of a dispersion facility at the toe of a slope where there would be absolutely no harm to the to the slope. And because it says prohibited, that that just wasn't a process that was able to able to occur. It's not as if it was, say, some numeric standard that can be varied from. So that that was the purpose, that 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 there are instances where it can be done effectively and safely and 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 but right now, they are prohibitive prohibited.
So then I'm curious, it would seem if that's the case, that that would be something that King County would want to do as well. You know, you're basically saying that there's no benefit to having the dispersion devices at the toe. And yet that's what the the King County requirement is, so I I'm confused, like, it seems like it's required, but then it doesn't provide any benefit. So could you elaborate on that, please?
Well, actually, it's 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 not required, it's it's prohibited within fifty feet of the top and the toe. And so, yeah, I don't know, and and we can find out from Toby if he if he's had any specific discussions with King County staff. But, yeah, I will, we we can find that out for you, certainly before the next meeting. Those discussions, I I don't know why King County doesn't provide any necessarily any kind of relief at the at the toe of the slope.
Yeah, that that would be helpful. And then I I might have started with this, but just similarly to the question about the LID facilities, just what are the the nature of the dispersion devices? Is that something that each lot or homeowner would would put in? And are they relatively small or larger, just that, and and very brief, don't, you don't have to show diagrams or anything like that?
Sure, sure, they're generally larger, they would not be on necessarily individual lots. So these aren't, this one isn't necessarily specific to LID. This is just drainage just generally. And it allows for stormwater to flow across large expanses of, you know, larger expanses of land where the the treatment then occurs through that, that crossing across the land or the dispersion.
Okay, that's helpful. And then I guess one or two other things, I I think it's important because you've mentioned, Wayne, about effective and safe. And the the text that we have, at least the summary just mentions effective. So I think it's important to make sure that if there are any amendments, that the safety of the slope and erosion hazard area and landslide area are all considered. And that and all three of those are are part of any kind of amendment as it's as it's written up.
Yeah, absolutely, and and that's kind of why we have that kind of failsafe with the geotechnical engineer looking at it. Good point.
If if I could jump in for a second here, I just want to point out one thing, I'm I'm over here on the side. The the city's critical areas rules require a fifty-foot top of slope and a fifty-foot toe of slope buffer. And within a buffer, development is restricted, heavily restricted. So not only, this would not necessarily allow a an infiltration facility to be placed in a toe of slope buffer. You would first have to get through the city's critical areas rules for that to be allowed. So i- if you were able to modify a toe of slope buffer first through geotechnical analysis, then you would open the door to allowing development or improvement within that buffer, which would then necessitate another geotechnical analysis, or maybe it's the same one, just going further, analyzing the implications of adding water to that area. So I want to highlight that there are multiple layers of regulation going on here. And before you even get to the point where you would be allowed to infiltrate in the toe of slope buffer, you would first have to have that buffer modified as a matter of a critical areas report, and that's a much bigger process.
That's very helpful and confusing. No, it makes sense, I appreciate that, thank you, David. And then, actually, the on the testing procedure, so number five. As I was hearing it, it sounds like that what's being proposed would, in fact, be more restrictive than the King County requirements, is that true?
That's correct, yeah, it would require the 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 more accurate test to be used on smaller sites than than currently is required.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Hongning, do you have any questions or comments?
Sure, can I ask two clarifying questions? First, can we go back to the rain barrel slide? So for the rain barrels, I remember that Lisa had mentioned that these rain barrels were only in selective communities. How of, how frequent, how common are these rain barrels among Sammamish homes?
They're they're not that common, we probably have a dozen or or fifteen or so currently. They are an option in the manual as a drainage device. So it it can be selected, but only a handful of lots at this point.
And then can we go back to slide seven? So on the bottom in your comments, I noticed that you wrote this amendment would dot 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 remove unnecessary administrative procedures for both applicants and staff. Could you clarify which administrative procedures and why they are unnecessary? So these, these are on the comments under the slide.
Um, no, sorry, I can probably answer that, that it's this was maybe a mistake when we were making the slideshow, we were just kind of copying and pasting the slides and then editing them as we went. And so I think that this was related to the bioretention under drains, and so that's
Correct.
Apologies.
Anything else? Okay, I have just a couple of comments. And I would say, Wayne, these are maybe more for our next meeting about this. Just in the interest of time, we have another big topic to get to tonight. So I'm going to pile on on number two, on the dispersion devices and the steep slopes. I'm glad to hear David talk about the additional layers of protection. I do have a sort of a dumb guy comment, and that is it seems to me that one of the most important things to protect the slope is the foot. And to make sure that the foot doesn't give way that causes the slope to slide. And so I want to be sure that we're not just dumping a bunch of water at the foot of a slope, you know, and causing liquefaction or other loosening at the at the at the foot, which is really the key part of making sure that the slope doesn't move around. So I'm I'm not super comfortable with with this, but maybe there's engineering behind it that and science that proves that my common sense farmer thoughts are not right. The other thing is I would pile on to what Mike said, is I'm kind of struggling to understand how this helps Sammamish. It feels like it helps developers or people that want to build something, but we need to find commonality between what they want to do and what the community needs and wants. And so I'd like to, in the next time we talk about that, make sure we kind of address that part of it, is how it helps the community. My other comment is just a number four, the shared low impact development facilities. Let's make sure, please, that the language is clear and we're not and we're not unintentionally. So here's why I say this. Our next topic tonight is going to be about how the state is going to require that on any lot, people can build, let's just say, in a simple way, two detached accessory dwelling units. So now we got a lot that's going to have three residences on it, and the state requires that those be able to be condominiumized. So now we got three owners. And that's within one property line, I think. So there are upcoming changes to the development code and to the housing requirements that are being dictated by the state that we should just make sure that the language would have put in place for this subject fits within those as well. Like, do we really want to restrict this in that situation? Or how do we want to handle that situation, which probably will happen at some point? So let's just be cautious that we don't blindly make a change to the language that doesn't actually take into consideration something that we're doing in parallel at the same time. And lastly, I'd just say about this, I scratched my head a little bit because I live on a cul-de-sac with nine houses. And the covenants of our homeowners association are crystal clear about which houses are responsible for maintaining the landscaping in that center of that cul-de-sac. So I'm kind of surprised that something like that doesn't exist in this situation right here, where, you know, somebody might not do the right thing. But if it's written down to begin with and clear, then it should be enforceable as well. So I think all of that is stuff we can talk about next time. I don't want to spend, you know, a ton of time digging into the water table here. But I think those are things worth considering, okay? Anybody have anything else before we move on to housing stuff? Wayne, Lisa, thank you. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Bye now.
Okay, now we'll let Jeff and David move up to the spotlight. Okay, so the next topic is our development regulations. As I think everybody knows, we're doing our comp plan update. And in parallel with that, there's some development regulations that are going to have to go with it for a variety of reasons, which we're going to hear about. So go ahead, guys, whoever's going to start us out.
I'll go ahead and introduce the topic while Jeff gets loaded here. So this evening, we are here to talk about middle housing, which is a really big topic. There are several recent bills that came out of the legislature that direct cities to make changes to their comprehensive plans and their development regulations to accommodate and facilitate the development of middle housing types. This is a big shift for many cities. We've worked for many years to regulate development in a form that we think is acceptable for our communities. And what we're seeing here is more of a widespread approach to generically applying development regulations across cities. So what we're hoping to do is to first lay a foundation for you as to what these bills require and what the cities will be having to address. And then I hope that we'll be able to get to later in the presentation, maybe not tonight, maybe another night, where the opportunities for city flexibility are and things that we do have control over. Because that's really important to note is where we can right-size it, where we're allowed by the state to right-size it for our community. So I think that that's really important is understand first what is absolutely required of us. And then to understand after that, where the opportunities for us exist to turn the dials or move the levers, so to speak, to right-size it for our community. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff Arango, who's our consultant from Framework, working on our comprehensive plan and the implementing development regulations.
Okay, thank you, David. I'm just trying to figure out how to share here.
Button right there.
Oh, yeah.
It was changing.
It was changing. Okay. Okay, great. We're ready to go. It's nice to be here in person. Thanks for the opportunity. So we're going to provide an overview of the updates that are part of the comprehensive plan update, which I know the commission has been deep into. Go to my first slide here. And so this, you know, update cycle is much more robust and complex than any previous ones, probably back to when the growth management was first implemented. On top of that, there's been new legislation that's literally been adopted kind of midway through the process that we've had to contend with. And the Growth Management Act does require that the comprehensive plan and development regulations are in alignment. So there are some required updates that we have to do. Some of those are local decisions that the Mamish is choosing to make, and some of those are the new legislative requirements. So the code updates will again align the plan and the SDC, implement the new legislation, and always try to improve usability of the code where we can. And I think really our approach on all of this is to take the requirements that have been given to us and implement them to the benefit of Mamish as best we can. There are some prescriptive things we don't have a lot of flexibility on, and there are others that we do, and we want to highlight those tonight. So the topics that we'll be hitting on, middle housing, which is the implementation of HB 1110. We did provide a fairly in-depth overview of that previously with the commission last fall and with the council. And the council did give us some fairly clear direction at the time. We'll be revisiting that and confirming that as we move through the process. Accessory dwelling units, as just mentioned previously by the chair, two accessory dwelling units need to be allowed on every lot. And we'll provide more information on that. One of the concepts that came out of our strategy, our land use strategy and to comply with the affordable housing requirements is what we're calling bonus parcels. This is, would be authorizing affordable housing on publicly owned properties, religious institutions. And so we'll provide a framework for how we would approach that. Step housing is a specific type of housing dealing with emergency transitional, permanent supportive housing. And there's some fairly prescriptive set of requirements for that and also a couple of options that we'll highlight for the city to consider. And then one of the major efforts in the plan update is a new approach to the future land use map that provides a little bit more flexibility as a planning tool. And so we need to make sure that those new land use categories are aligned with our zoning districts, which are also changing as a result of some of the new legislation, including the middle housing bill. So we'll start with the middle housing bill, which is HB 1110. The implementation of that is broken out into three tiers. And those tiers are based primarily on population and proximity to, or I should say, the population of the county. Right now, Mamish is what's called a tier-two city. That's because it's less than 75,000 people, also within the urban part of King County. Once Mamish gets above 75,000 people, it will then become a tier-one community. And there will be new requirements in terms of the amount of, or the number of units that will be, must be permitted per lot. And middle housing needs to be provided in single-family zones, which means zones where single-family detachment is predominant land use. That's primarily the R zones, which is, I think, over 90% of the land area of the city. So we need to allow two units on every lot. And we need to allow four units on every lot if one unit is affordable. And the bill has outlined these density requirements, you'll notice, as units per lot. And most people are probably more familiar with units per acre. Units per acre is, one of the benefits of that is it's scalable. Doesn't matter what the lot size is. You know how many units per acre you're allowed to build. When you have a lot-based density, you know, applying two units on a lot is very different on a 5,000-square-foot lot versus a one-acre lot. So part of our charge is to figure out what we want those lots to be going forward, understanding that every existing lot is going to get these numbers of units. And I'll go into more detail about that in a moment. The other requirement of the bill is to allow six of nine middle housing types. And this is something we presented last fall and I think got some pretty clear direction and from the city council and basically focusing on kind of the less intense six of nine. So feel like we have good direction on that and we'll confirm that as we continue to go through the process. Another requirement, the standards may not be more strict than those that apply to single-family dwellings. And one of the, you know, kind of standard approaches to zoning that many cities use is that you have more relaxed standards for single-family as soon as you start to get into three, four units per lot. There's often more process and more regulations. So we have to make sure that those are in alignment. And some of that may be more standards for single-family, but also making sure that the rules are reasonable and can facilitate the type of development that we're required to allow. Okay, so we'll go a little bit more into the whole tension between units per acre versus units per lot. And so we're going to use the R4 zone as our example because it's the easiest to provide. The math is fairly straightforward. And so at an R4 zone, the density is four units per acre. And for those of you that were involved in development regulations phase two back in 2021, one of the things we talked about extensively is that Mamish doesn't have a minimum lot size. So in many communities in an R4 zone, they would simply say every lot has to be a quarter acre. And so that's prescriptive. You know what that looks like. You know, if you add two units or three units or four units to that lot, you know what the density is. But Mamish does not have a minimum lot size. Mamish allows you to reduce your lot size below the quarter acre, for example, in the R4 zone. And you're able to do that by preserving open space tracks. There's some tie-ins with the discussion we just had around stormwater. But you calculate the area based on your whole site, not based on the individual lot sizes. And as part of development regs phase two, we had a discussion about whether we wanted to require a minimum lot size. And ultimately, all of us came to the conclusion that we did not want to at the time. But we did implement some pretty specific standards around the preservation of open space and the reduction of lot sizes so that there were some public benefits associated with it. It wasn't just simply to have a patch of grass so that you could reduce your infrastructure costs and make your development more affordable. There had to be some sort of public benefit, open space, tree protection, things like that. But nonetheless, you still can get approval for a project that has a smaller lot size. And so the challenge now is when you get approval for that smaller lot size, now these numbers of units apply to that lot regardless of what size it is. And so that kind of makes some of the challenges we have to deal with. And I think I covered everything on this slide. Go through. I won't go into a lot of detail on this, but this is just kind of showing you how you would calculate units per acre. And so in an R4 lot, you'd have two units on a quarter acre lot, which is 10,890 square feet. You quickly get to eight units. If you have three units on an R4, you end up with 12 units an acre, which is essentially the accessory dwelling unit requirements now. However, Mamish has, in the R4 zone, a lot of lots that are less than a quarter acre, right? So there have been subdivisions approved with 5,000-square-foot lots. So now, when you calculate the density of two units on a 5,000-square-foot lot, you're at 17.5 units an acre. So the density levels are going to apply differently based on the existing lot sizes. And there's not anything we can really do about that. What we can do is figure out the standards going forward in terms of how large of lots we would like to see and how that relates to the ability to preserve open space and the public benefits associated with that. Okay, so this is a lot, this is the same text, but I want to call, just show you an example. So one of the things we did back in development regs phase two is we did these gradient maps to look at how big parcels are in each zone to basically see how different they are from what a standard lot size might be. And so the area in the circle here is one that I want to call attention to. So this is within the R4 zoning district. And you can see the darker colored lots are either between 5,000 and 7,500 or 0 to 5,000. So even though these are in what is essentially a quarter acre zoning district, there's a number of small lots. And each of these would now, under the new rules, be allowed to have two units or three units with two accessory dwelling units. And as was brought up earlier, really the distinction between a single-family home and two ADUs and some sort of triplex or multi-unit project with three units is really not a big distinction anymore because accessory dwelling unit requirements used to require the owner to live there. You couldn't resell them. There were pretty small size limits. Sometimes they had to be attached to the house or within it. But a lot of those standards, which I'll go through in more detail in a moment, are restricted under the accessory dwelling unit law. So this is some of our challenges is that we have some existing lots that are going to get essentially more density than potentially some of the newer lots that will be created in the future. And I won't go into a lot of detail here, but this is just the math that shows how these units, units per lot standards apply to the different zones. You know, some of these we don't have to necessarily provide now, like the six units. But once we get over that 75,000 threshold, that will kick in. And so this is just showing, like, if you did have a standard lot size in each of these districts and you apply the unit lot densities, this is basically what you get to. So in the R6 zone, if you have four units, you're already at 24 units an acre. And that's more dense than what used to be the urban residential. So it escalates pretty quickly. And some of what we can do is modify these districts, collapse them, bring them closer together. Some might get less dense, some might get a little more dense. But there is some potential to kind of simplify or equalize this or continue to work within the same structure as well. Just really trying to hit home on this. This is just another way to present it in more of a table. And again, just focusing on the R4 because it's pretty simple. The base density is four units an acre. Two units per lot would allow eight units an acre. The ADU bill, which essentially allows three units per lot, would get you to 12. The four units, which we are required to allow if one unit is affordable. I think what's more likely to happen would be an affordable housing developer might do a four-unit affordable project. Seems unlikely a for-profit developer would do that. But nonetheless, we do have to write rules for it. And then down below, just for comparison, the R12 and the R18 are the existing urban residential zone, which is basically, at this point, doesn't have any development potential for the properties that are, currently have that designation. And then just a little massing model to kind of show this. This is basically a standard R4 lot with a duplex on it. This is a corner, or no, I guess not a corner lot, but it has a rear garage there on that lot. And then four units. This is the scenario we have to allow with the affordable unit. Just showing kind of a four-plex on that site. This one without parking and this one with garage access. So accessory dwelling units required under HB 1337. And one of the choices is whether to count the ADUs towards the maximum unit density. And I think we would recommend that the city does count them. And by counting them, that means that, you know, you could get three units using the ADU provisions or potentially using the middle housing, but not both. If you choose not to count them, then you would essentially end up with four units on every lot if you could build a duplex and then each could have an ADU. So we recommend just kind of keeping it all within the three units and counting them towards the density. There are some limits on the amount of parking that may be required, and it varies by lot size. If it's less than 6,000 square feet, you can't require more than one parking stall. If your lot is larger, you can require two. And again, we need to make sure that we're, have no less than 1,000 square feet maximum size. So every ADU will be, at least can be up to 1,000 square feet. No restrictions or requirements for owner occupancy. And then they can be rented or sold off as condominiums. So this is a graphic we used back in the fall. And I believe we presented it to the commission and also to the council. And this is just kind of looking at how the middle housing bill and the accessory dwelling unit bills kind of line up. And we're trying to find ways to have simplicity and clarity when we can because this stuff is inherently kind of confusing. But just a quick comparison. So a single-family unit plus two ADUs in the R4 zone, that equals 12 units per acre. If you allowed a triplex in that zone, it would be the same, 12 units an acre. So that distinction is less so than it was prior to this bill being passed. And you can see, even at 12 units an acre, there's quite a bit of space for trees. And you can see even at 12 units an acre, there's quite a bit of space for trees. This one is shown with an alley, which definitely helps in terms of the amount of space needed for parking and the ability to preserve trees. But there is, you know, green space and opportunities for stormwater and open space, which I think is, is important to note. Okay, next topic, step housing deals with shelters, transitional, emergency, and permanent supportive. These standards are fairly prescriptive, at least the first part. We must allow these in all zoning districts that allow hotels. Currently, hotels are permitted in town center, community business, and office zones, so basically the centers within the community. We do have capacity to meet the need that we need to provide. And then transitional and permanent supportive housing must be permitted in all zoning districts that allow residential dwellings and hotels. And we also would expressly permit them on the bonus parcels, which is the intent of that strategy. And then a decision point for the city of which I think, you know, we probably would want to move forward with some measure of standards here, but the city may develop reasonable occupancy spacing and intensity of use requirements for indoor emergency housing and shelters. So you could have standards in terms of how close or far away they're located, intensity of the use, so scale of development. So those are things that the city can regulate, but we must allow them. The topic of affordable housing on bonus parcels, we would do this as an accessory use. So for example, if you had a property that was owned by a religious institution, you could have affordable housing as an accessory use. And then we would develop what we'd call use-based standards that would apply to all of these projects in which we can come, you know, develop any sort of standards we think are beneficial, could deal with density and intensity, setbacks, buffers, tree preservation, parking standards, building heights, landscape, and open space. So kind of a wide array of, variety of options there for regulations. And this is, this is really a local strategy that we're implementing to meet our obligations under the comp plan update. And then the last one is fairly straightforward, but we have some new future land use designations that we want to make sure that they're aligned with the zoning. In some cases, one land use designation, like the neighborhood residential, which is the yellow, that's the majority of the map, that designation could result in a couple of different zoning districts, so there is some flexibility. If the city wants to make a zoning change within that designation, it wouldn't have to go back and update the comprehensive plan. In other cases, the zoning and the land use designations are more closely matched. For example, the town center. As we start to do subarea plans for some of the mixed-use centers, we could also develop customized zoning that's specific to those areas as well. So this is a fairly straightforward exercise, but something that we do need to do. And then another part of that is, again, clarifying what the urban residential means in terms of zoning or whether that makes sense to continue that district going forward. So up top here is where I just mentioned the neighborhood residential could lead into any number of the R zones. And then to implement the middle housing, we're looking at producing an overlay district that would apply to all those areas within that designation. And that is the conclusion of the presentation. Appreciate the time and looking forward to discussion and feedback.
Thanks, Jeff. Who would like to go first?
I can go first.
Okay. Hisham.
So all these things are implemented because of the HB 1110?
That is, yeah, that is the middle housing one, but there's also HB 1337, which is the accessory dwelling unit. And then a lot of the overarching requirements come from House Bill 1220, which amended the Growth Management Act to require cities to more specifically plan for levels of affordable housing.
And just listening to the presentation at a very high level, not defining the lot sizes, and let's take an example. I have an acre and I split it into four. You took one, he took one, I took one, and he took one. And then each one of us decided to start splitting more. Where, where does it stop? And all the things you talked about, honestly, I don't see, I don't see a benefit for the current residents. And my mind goes to these people, they chose to live here for the lifestyle of Samamish, and they are paying a premium for that. And again, like the couple we talked about a few weeks ago, people pay the premium over 20 years, that's their life. And now we're going to do all these changes because of this code. It's a man-made code. What does it take to challenge it? Go to the Washington State Supreme Court? What, what does it take to challenge that newly implemented code that, that's going to change the lifestyle for people who chose to be here for over 20 years?
Yeah. I, I can't answer specifically how it would be challenged, but, you know, this was implemented by the legislature.
Man-made.
Which is representative of the people that voted for them. So the, the opportunity to change it would probably be through the legislative process, potentially.
So, yeah, I mean, our, there's a couple of things. We, we could talk about fighting it all day. We're here to talk about how to comply with it. So if we want to have another channel conversation that's about how to fight it, sure, that's, that's great. But really, we'd like to focus on, we, we, you know, we've worked really hard in this community to set our rules to the right size that we feel balance the objectives of growth and lifestyle, right? The reason why people move here. We put a lot of effort into that. There's been a lot of tension over the past years in trying to balance that out. We recently, through our Development Regulations Update Process, Phase One, Phase Two, some of the commissioners here were party to those, put a lot of work into trying to right-size our development regulations. So we were equally as surprised and anxious when we saw these bills get passed. Many of our city counterparts are in the same position. But at the same time, we do have a housing crisis. There's a supply crisis. There's a limited amount of land in the UGA, the Urban Growth Area, which is also man-made. And there are, there are attempts being made by the state to open up the, the supply of land to be made available to build additional housing units with the hope of bringing down the price or making diverse housing types available that might be at a different price because maybe they're smaller units or they're a different type of unit. So what we're focusing on here is, is how do we fit this into our code? How do we fit this into our current rule set in a way that isn't disruptive to the community or is at least is minimizing disruption as much as we can, given the tools that we're left with? And there are, I think, a few things that are favorable for now. These rules, they apply, but they don't apply in HOAs. So if you have a recently divided subdivision that you live in that is, follows the Homeowners' Association Act and follows the subdivision act, you likely have a community covenant associated with your property that restricts the re-division or redevelopment of your property with anything except a single-family home. The legislature was very specific in this bill that says that it does not apply, that if there are restrictive covenants that prohibit this type of middle housing from happening, that that restrictive covenant may allow, I don't know the way to say this, that it supersedes in the end. So this bill does not overrule community covenants. The bill does say that if you live in a community that has an HOA and has covenants, but your covenants don't address this type of housing, doesn't, doesn't say you can't re-divide. Your covenant doesn't say you can't have anything except a single-family home. You may not modify your covenants to now restrict that. So anybody who has covenants that restricts it are vested or grandfathered, right? You can't now change your covenants to prohibit it. And any new divisions that happen, any new subdivisions that are created cannot create community covenants that would prohibit this from happening. So our estimation, you know, most of Samamish is, consists of subdivisions that were created post-subdivision law and post-homeowners' association law. And most of the subdivisions in Samamish have covenants that restrict the re-division or development of land in a way that would, that would include middle housing. So our back-of-the-napkin analysis is, is that about 80% of the city is occupied by those types of divisions. So what is left is really what I think the focus of this is for now. That's not to say that the legislature couldn't come back around in the next cycle and decide to change this, this bill in a manner that says that it overrules HOA restrictions. So we're trying to be future, future-focused and be careful in how we craft this in the event that that did happen, that we have a rule set that can work in, in, across the city, that minimizes as much as we can with the tools that we have at hand, impact to communities and neighborhoods and individual homeowners and neighbors, and that also still provides what the legislature was trying to achieve, which is an increased supply for the development of housing and different housing types than what we traditionally, or more recently, have been seeing built in the community.
Well, I go back to, we have 240 acres that, that's empty now, that can be developed for housing. And I know John is going to talk about what we went to yesterday and the success stories that we heard about. Those do not have to happen at locations that we just looked at on the project over there. What the legislators are doing, they are changing cities like Samamish to like downtown areas. And that, that's just not right.
So I'm not allowed to have an opinion on that, but.
I, I do. I'll say my opinion. Again, I'm here to serve the public. I'm, I'm not here to just say yes sir to the legislators. If I feel what they are proposing is not in the benefit of the public, I'm just going to say it. And I'm going to say we have to challenge them.
Ajay?
Thank you. I have a question on the, this one. So we talked about all of the, this one. So let's assume in like five, seven years, we get our R4s, we get our R12s, we get our R18s, and they're all occupied. Where would the facilities that address them, that address their needs get situated? Like a new school? If there is a second high school that has to be there in Samamish, or third high school, now that we have two high schools, the third high school that has to be there, or another middle school, and so on and so forth? Are we accounting for space somewhere that that growth will happen? Or are we going to do that as we proceed on it to see where the, where the population grows from there?
So we, we are not specifically calling out zoned land for schools that is a sad aside, that the city is setting aside. The district, the districts, the city has three districts. The districts all have capital facilities plans that plan out six years. They have other plans that plan out further and have acquisition strategies and have school development strategies. However, the, the, the districts largely work off of a six-year plan. The districts closely monitor development activity. They are aware of 1110. We've had multiple conversations with them around our comprehensive plan update and some of the things that we see coming. They work with the other cities within their, within their districts as well. That is a really great question. You know, not, not just schools, but also facilities and level of service related to park space, related to public safety, related to transportation infrastructure, related to health infrastructure, that our, our systems around the Puget Sound are based on a certain setup of zoning and classifications under Puget Sound Regional Council's Division 2050. And this is not even contemplated in PSRC's Division 2050. So this goes much higher. King County countywide planning policy, the CPPs that were recently done, were done prior to 1110 being put in place. So even the King County's countywide planning policies don't reflect 1110. So as Jeff said, this is a major curveball that was thrown at us mid-cycle. You know, we've already been through our buildable lands, our land capacity analysis. We've been through our gap analysis. We made it through a majority of the process and background work that's required for a comprehensive plan update. Then we were served with HB 1110.
Yeah. The only thing I'll add to that is none of the amounts, or the amount of growth that cities are assuming was not impacted by the passage of HB 1110, if that makes sense. You know, there may at some point be more momentum in middle housing, I will say, from the communities around the country and our colleagues that have worked on this issue. The uptake is not super fast, you know, like these small, projects are smaller, you know, they tend to be more dispersed. So, you know, it, it tends not to be a huge wave of development, for what it's worth.
Got it. And my second question, my last question here, is that you, in your picture that you had of showing the, you had a, like a plan that showed some of the land and the roads that were there. Ah, yeah, this one, the R12 alley loaded. Are you suggesting that the alley on both the front and the back would be, would be a requirement, or is that not necessarily?
Yeah, I mean, it's a good question. I think that's an open question as to whether it's required or not. There are some really great examples of projects with alleys in Samamish that we used as part of Development Regs Phase Two. And I'll just talk about some of the trade-offs. So this is the street here and the alley in the back. And parking is, is obviously a big issue. It impacts your ability to provide stormwater management, open space, things like that. And what makes alleys really effective is you don't need any more space than just the parking stall if, if you have parking access directly off of the alley. So it's much more efficient from a space perspective, and it makes the street frontage nicer. You know, would we actually require it? I, I'm not sure, but certainly it could be an option, at least, I think, as it is today. But there are definitely some advantages to, to using alleys for this type of housing.
Got it. Because the moment I saw that, this looked very much like a Redmond Ridge where they have the front of the road and that's where all the people park their cars who are coming to visit, for example. And then the, the alley at the back helps the family use that to either have a detached parking or an included, attached parking that is there to be able to do that. That could also end up being the, the so-called buffer between the R12 and R18s to existing establishments. Is that, is that a valid point, or am I just stretching it?
I mean, it could be if it was on the, the boundary line. I mean, it certainly provides more of a distinction between any property on the other side of the alley. And, you know, the alleys also can have a multi-functional purposes for kids to play and have, you know, small neighborhood events and things like that. So, yeah, it could definitely serve as a break between properties as well.
Got it, got it. Thank you.
So Ayed, how about you?
Couple of questions, kind of follow up on what Ajay said. Let's talk about the advantage of the, having alley in the back. Coming from the transportation side, it does make a lot of sense as far as providing for safer place for the kids to be around. You narrow in the streets, you create a more common environment if you have that alleyway because there is no provision for parking on both sides that creates more paved area and all that. So there are a lot of advantages. And then the other one is that, I'm assuming that, Jeff, as you said, that parking for the tenants or the owners would be in the back, right? So that, that's probably an advantage from their side, their side of you.
Because otherwise, yeah, you have to have a driveway along the side and go back.
Exactly, exactly.
And you end up having to add that much more pavement and.
And also, I'm assuming that under this, you don't require, there is no requirement for the parking garage.
No. And actually, there's a new bill that says we can't require parking garage or something, or not a parking garage, a garage, like a residential garage. But that would be up to the owner's discretion if they wanted to have a garage.
Question about the date of effective of the HB 1110. Is that effective immediately?
It's, we have to have it done by June of next year, but since the city has been ahead of schedule, we're planning to have it done by the end of the year with the comp plan adoption. But we technically, cities have to adopt these changes by June 30th of 2025.
Regardless of where the city is, I'm not necessarily talking in this case about Samamish, generally speaking. If the cities are in the beginning, let's say in the earlier stage of developing a comp plan, they're not going to be able to finish it by the end of the year. Regardless of where the cities, I'm not necessarily talking in this case about Sammamish, generally speaking. If the cities are in the beginning, let's say in the earlier stage of developing a comp plan, they're not going to be able to finish it by the end of the year, so.
That's a distinct possibility, but it won't be Sammamish.
So one of the outcomes of that is if a city does not prepare its own compliant ordinance that implements 1110 by June of 2025, there is a model ordinance that the State Department of Commerce has put together that would automatically go into effect in that city. So what the legislature is saying here is cities, get your act together, get these rules in place. If you want to take advantage of the areas where you can set the levers and dials to customize it to the city's needs, if you don't do that by June of 2025, then our model ordinance takes effect.
What would be the difference? How restrictive is the Department of Commerce guidelines?
Well, I think it doesn't, it won't capture all the nuances that we just talked about. For example, it wouldn't capture the nuance that Sammamish doesn't have a minimum lot size. And so if we just adopted the ordinance, there could be some unintended consequences. So I think we would strongly recommend that we customize this to Sammamish.
There are some really good parts of the model ordinance, and there are some parts that definitely would not be to our liking or favorable to the community.
I know, I know that we're not supposed to talk today about the town center, but which of these kind of middle housing and all that different kind of classification would be applicable to the town center?
Well, definitely townhouses.
Townhouses.
Yeah. So the base densities in the town center, I think in the A-zone, around 18 units an acre, and there's one townhouse project, I think, that's either gotten approval.
Break ground.
Yeah, or break ground. So definitely townhouses. And in some of the other projects we've done recently where we've had an economist look at it, the larger for sale units tend to be the most attractive from a feasibility standpoint. You know, beyond that, maybe cottage housing, but that might be a little bit low intensity. I would say probably townhouses and then apartment buildings, which are not part of the middle housing, are probably the two typologies and maybe a few others.
Yeah, I would, so I've talked to a few developers about this, about 1110. I've talked to, we've been in community conversations amongst all the cities. We collaborate on these things. And it's most likely that what we will see as a result of 1110 is duplexes that look and feel like single-family homes. So the way the rules could play out is, so say you have an R4 zone, and you could then divide, so you had, so you had two acres in an R4 zone, and it was greenfield. Let's just, it doesn't really exist in Sammamish, and if it did, it'd be a premium. But let's just for a minute, imagine that you had a vacant lot, greenfield, R4, and flat, and you could develop it, and it was square, right? So you take R4, you now get, you now turn two acres into eight units, eight lots, right? On each lot, then, you would be, you would most likely see a duplex be built, where it would be, have the same height limit as a single-family home, it would have the same setbacks as a single-family home, it would have the same Florida area ratio limits as a single-family home, and it would have the same tree retention requirements as a single-family home. It would have the same critical areas application rules, the same stormwater drainage requirements, the same sewer requirements, the same water requirements. The only difference where I don't know the answer to is how it would apply to transportation concurrency, and how it would, I think the parking would be, would be the same as a single-family home, because you're only allowed to require one parking space per unit, so it would be two parking spaces like we currently require. So ultimately, at the end of the day, the bulk and scale of the code, the envelope that you're allowed to build in, would be no different than what we're seeing being built today. It just would be that there are two units within that. So if we allow a .5 FAR, so if you're in an R4 zone, and in the R4 zone, you would create a lot size that's about 10,000 square feet, and within a 10,000 square foot lot, if you had a .5 FAR, you would be allowed to build 5,000 square feet of living space. So that would result in a duplex that has a common wall, looks and feels kind of like a single-family home, but for some design differences, and would have two 2,500 square foot living units within it. We are currently seeing, very common, where we have lots like that in an R4 that are created, the lots are smaller, actually, generally, because we have set aside for recreation space or open space or trench roads and whatnot. And we're seeing generally homes being built in Sammamish, high 3,000s to 5,000 square feet. That is a very normal thing to see built. So I present back to you that if you were to see that scenario unfold, it is not too different from what we are currently seeing being built in bulk and scale in the community.
I know, I know John is going to talk about the, we had a good session yesterday, some of us spent about three, four hours listening to our channel. A lot of people, they're discussing the housing issues. David, you were there. And one of the things that kind of caught my attention, more or less what you just talked about, is the city of Kirkland, they require that some of these affordable housing appearance to be exactly the same. So when you drive around, you don't see that this is affordable housing, this is duplex and all that, the appearance. And that makes a lot of difference as far as, you know, the community is against these high-density development, particularly as far as the look and all that. But Kirkland has taken that a step further and used that. Jeff, can you?
Certainly something we can look at. Again, whatever standards we come up with, particularly related to the middle housing, also has to apply to single families, so we have to keep that in mind. But certainly for larger-scale projects, we don't have that same limitation.
So there's another bill. This is, oh wait, there's more. There's another bill out there called SB 5290. And 5290 is related to permit processing. And one of the things that 5290 does is it says that you cannot have complex design requirements. You have to have objective, clearly stated, design requirements. So what we can't do is make buildings that are now being built under 1110 go through some form of design review. We have to, and we are limited by 5290 in what we can require as part of the permit process. So we're limited in that regard as well. I just want to make sure that, you know, this is a very big deal for us, and I want to be clear about all the different sides of it. In addition, there's another bill, 6015, that just came out just recently. So the legislature hasn't stopped. They keep kicking these things out. There's a new one, Senate Bill 6015, that limits how we can, what we can do with regard to parking requirements. So we can require one stall per unit, but we cannot require it to be bigger than a certain size. We can't, if you're saying to a developer, you have to retain the trees and you have to provide the parking, and the developer can say, hey, we can't provide the parking if we have to retain the tree, they're not required to provide the parking. So there are all these new layers added by the legislature that we're constantly receiving and we're assessing. So we're here to work with you to try and sift through this over the next few months.
Can someone extend the meeting, please? And I would say 9:15 with a goal of being done by nine.
Okay. I propose extending the meeting by 45 minutes to 9:15.
Second? If it moved to second to extend to 9:15, all those in paper say aye.
Aye.
I propose no, thank you. Okay, how about Mike? What do you got, Mike?
Made eye contact or something. Actually, I have to take a step back here, because I'm not sure, like, the next steps and what we're, what kind of feedback you're really looking for right now. And I actually pulled up where it says next steps in the agenda bill, and initial feedback and direction on implementation. And, you know, I don't think you're asking us to get into, you know, should there be alleyways or not, and those kinds of things. So it's more a reaction to the, yeah, so what are you looking for from us?
Well, I think we're looking for an understanding of the range of topics and our approach to doing the work. So we want to be here as a resource to answer questions and clarify things, because it is very complex. And we wanted to do that before we came back with a bunch of written code. Because if we just hand you a bunch of written code without any of this, you're going to be confused. So that's really, it's really part education, get your initial responses, and if there's anything where you do have input or direction that could inform some of the work, which will include coming back with the code, then that's really what we're looking for.
Okay, great. So actually, one piece, I guess, of advice, the example, David, that you gave, that basically said, here's the envelope, it'll look and feel like a single-family home, there'll be two units in it of 2,500 square feet. Awesome. And that takes all of this kind of rules and statements and makes it understandable. And there needs to be a few examples like that. And, you know, also, I think, just in terms of anybody who watches these things, which is not a lot, but, you know, it does get around, like, how much of Sammamish would be affected? So, you know, the 80% that is currently under, you know, covenants with HOAs. So what that says is that, to the extent that you can, it's not going to be this radical change across every acre of Sammamish. There are certain areas that will be affected. And as best as possible, what would those areas? So just so we can get a better sense of the impact of all of these. And then the last thing, and this is part of a conversation we had as prep with David and Evan earlier, what is really hardwired required? Like, some of the things around bonus parcels or step is like, it sounds like this is it, you know, and okay. But where we get into how we're going to situate duplexes on a lot, that's where there's a lot of flexibility and, you know, focuses on that with a couple of alternatives, and that would be really helpful in providing, you know, some guidance and feedback. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
That sounds great. We can try to frame that up when we actually come back with the draft code in terms of specifics. So, thanks.
John?
So I want to kind of flip back to Shom's opening. You know, this is a huge radical change, not just for our city, but for everyone inside the growth management boundary. But I wanted to call out just a couple of things that got touched on. David particularly talked about the estimated 80% of lots that are already covered by covenants. And my guess is that many of those are sub 10,000 because they're in developments that have set aside lots for drainage and play areas and stuff. And then same time, and maybe David can confirm, we're pretty quickly moving towards a situation where we're in infill, not new tracks. So, and I think this goes a little bit to what Mike was talking about, when you show essentially what is a development tract, as opposed to these activities, mostly, I'm guessing, correct me if I'm wrong, are going to happen on, occur on individual lots. I've got an R4 lot with a house, and there's enough room around the house that, or I want to tear it down and build the townhomes. So we've got the economics, we've got landowner, homeowner choice, you know, and fundamentally the question is, how many homeowners of the 20% that can want to put an ADU, or even could? Because as we get into the meat of the development regulations, you've got your lot coverage minimums, maximums. What are we going to do, critical areas? A lot of these are, they're not greenfields. They're compromised lots that have sensitive areas on them, or all sorts of things. Mary's already left. Okay. You know, so wrapping all of that together, if we can give folks a better idea of, okay, you've got a lot, one acre, what can you do with that? Because 25% of it's controlled by steep slope. You know, I realize there's taking issues and that sort of thing, but who's going to want to go and just jam a whole bunch of stuff in just because they can? The economics here, I think, are, at least in the near and midterm, are really controlling factors, that if we could have a little more information on that, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, we can go back and look at some of the parcels, like, when King County does their urban land capacity analysis, they identify properties that are more likely to redevelop. And so some of those are in the R zones that would be affected by this, and we can go back and bring that map back, and you'll see it's, you know, it's a handful, well, more than a handful, but it's, you know, not every property. So I think your description is probably accurate in that you'd probably be likely to see like a small ADU or something in the infill. The idea that someone would go and tear down relatively new housing stock seems kind of unlikely to me, but possible.
I also want to highlight that our code has had in it provision and allowance and incentive to build duplexes on single-family lots for as long as I can remember. I think it's a holdover from King County. And in fact, it, so in our code currently, if you had a corner lot and you weren't in an HOA, and you wanted to tear down your house, you could build it back as a duplex today. And we're not seeing it happen all over the city, right? You could also build an ADU today. You could actually build two ADUs today. You could have an attached ADU and a detached ADU today, and we're not seeing it happen all over the city. You could also build townhomes in our zoning today. There's a whole section of our code that applies to that, and we're not seeing it happen today. So I think what the question is about economics, and the issue about economics is a really good one, that's not, doesn't mean that it won't start happening tomorrow at a faster rate, and that's what we're wanting to be careful of. But there is sort of a limit on, I think, what the market is really asking for. And what I'm hearing from the development community is, is that they're not really interested in cramming every tiny little unit they can on lots. What they really would rather build is a nicely-built duplex in a, you know, they want an assemblage of teardown stock, where they can go in and reconfigure the lots and build duplexes and then sell the, you know, nice, really nice, well-built duplexes. And that's what I'm hearing the market interest is in Sammamish.
Yeah, so having that contrast of what's possible today and what's likely economically, doesn't seem to be that far apart. You know, we're not, we don't have Lake Hills-style housing, where that could happen, where you get four properties and you want to do some teardown and redevelopment. So having that as a.
Ask if you can follow up questions.
Go ahead.
Back to the 80/20 rule. Is there any way that we can put a map together? Yeah, I mean, Mary is good at bringing maps that show any color-coded areas and all that. Is there any way that visually we can see the 80/20, how throughout the city, the area under covenant and the areas are not?
So the challenge is twofold. First is that we do not know where all of our HOAs are, right? It's a bit of a historic problem we have at the city, and it's really hard to add new ones. We have most of them, so we can show you where, we know where they are. The second problem is, is that we are not party to the covenants. So the city is not party to those, so we don't have those. And it's a major research effort for us to pull all the covenants from all the HOAs, read the covenants, and find what exactly they say and allow and restrict.
But would it make sense to at least do whatever you have, so visually we can?
Sure, we'd be happy to provide the map that we have and show you. And remember, that's of the developable area in the city. There's more land in the city, so if he said, he said 80%, and I'm talking about 80% of the, I estimate, emphasis on estimate, 80% of the developable area in the city is encumbered, or is somehow covered with HOAs that have restrictive covenants.
That's called a guesstimate, by the way.
Yeah, so I think prefacing all of this stuff with where we are today, what the economics look like, you know, any graphical stuff, and, as I said, showing that strip isn't a likely scenario in our case. So you might need to focus more on some individual lots as examples, because a lot of the lot coverage, it's just not practical to do anything to unless you tear the house down.
One other thing to keep in mind is that we can be reactive and dynamic here. So we're first and foremost focused on the policy language, because we cannot go back and just amend the comprehensive plan at will, right? There is a very deliberate process governed by state law as to how we can amend our comprehensive plan. We can update our development regulations whenever we want to, so long as they're compliant, because once you get out of compliance, you could get taken to the Growth Management's Hearings Board, which we've been before. So we want to make sure that we're aware that if we see trends, we do our best, but if we see trends occurring over time, we can be reactive to that, or even if we see something, try and get ahead of it, we can do that. So it's not like, once the development regs are in place, we're stuck with them. We can amend them over time going forward, and we have experience with that.
Yeah, in fact, I think that's to be expected. I mean, I don't know if I'd use the term reactive, because hopefully we get it better the first time, but there will be some iterations and some refinements, certainly over time.
I guess one technical question is, will anything like critical areas or lot coverage requirements supersede any of these counts?
No, but, I mean, there is an effort to look and make sure that the development standards work, and so that you actually can feasibly get development. I mean, there are single-family homes with very high lot coverage in the city already, so it's something we want to take a look at, and it's actually related to the discussion earlier about stormwater, right? If you have a larger lot, and we put some standards in development regs phase two on this, you have more opportunity for, you know, stormwater management, open space, and things like that, so.
Hunning, go ahead.
Okay, so, first question, I just talked a lot about some additional bills that are going to the legislature. Are there any other ones that the legislature is considering that might throw another wrench into our considerations?
I don't, yeah, great question. I don't know the answer currently. I can tell you recently, there was a bill, and it might come back, because I think this was the second time it's come up, but it didn't pass. Actually, there were a few. One was a lot-splitting bill, and so it allowed the splitting of lots down to, like, 2,000 square feet or something. And so, under that scenario, we would have, we would have very little control to do what we had proposed, which was sort of coming up with a reasonable density level going forward that was somewhat prescriptive. We would basically be the subject to whatever folks wanted to split their lots at. So that one did not pass. There was also a transit-oriented development bill, which might affect the city a little bit less, but it provided some resources for cities for transit-oriented develop, given the region's investment in transit infrastructure. So those were two I know about that did not pass.
Session over, too?
Yeah, but that was, like, previously, yeah.
So it's to be next year.
Yeah.
Wait for the next session, so.
Hopefully, we're good for now.
Yeah, we'll have to monitor what gets pushed forward with the next legislative session.
Anything else, Hunning?
Yeah, so one other thing, I noticed in the agenda bill, it said that Sammamish should move into a different phase once we get into 75,000 people. Based on our population projections, how soon is that going to happen? Will it happen, like, once we set the code and developers start working, and then we tell them a couple of months later, oh yeah, we're expecting to hit this new phase soon, please start considering this?
That's a somewhat hard question to answer, because the comp plan has to be based on the growth projection that's been provided to us by the county. And so, that, I think, is somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,000 people, which would not quite get us there. So, based on our current projection, it would take longer than the 20-year horizon for the plan, but there's also a possibility it could happen sooner.
So from a presentation that was done to the Planning Commission last year, we had forecasted that a 2022 to 2044 linear population projection, we would hit 75,000 at approximately 2034. So we are redoing our comp plan before then, so the idea there is that before the next comp plan cycle starts, we will not be at 75,000.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of things. First off, I would say, I think, and some of this is going to echo what others have said, but that's okay, I think that this conversation is really two-part, and I really encourage that we do images and the discussion get somewhat separated into the part, which is future development, because that used to be what we all talked about in the past, and that's what all of our development regulations were about, mostly. But now we're in a new reality where we have to think about future development, like the images you showed, but actually, people are very concerned about infill and existing, you know, neighborhoods, and what's the impact on my house and my cul-de-sac and my street? And so I think it's really, it would be helpful if we try to, within the limits of the time we have available, you know, create some separation between those two, because I think it will be easier for people to emotionally, there's probably a better word here, intellectually, deal with the new development stuff that we're used to doing all the time, than, than the, well, how's it going to affect me and my neighborhood? So, a suggestion that we kind of think about that a little bit.
Can I just find that real quick? One of the things that is in our scope is to actually do what we're calling a context analysis, but that would actually go into specific sites that we would select within Sammamish, and then we would do some design graphics to show how that would work. And our partner Code Studio, who is on our team, has done this work different places around the country, and they have some interesting strategies that they've used that we might be able to use in Sammamish that are specifically about protecting kind of the look and feel of existing neighborhoods. So there could, for example, be an incentive to keep your single-family home and add an ADU versus tearing it down, things like that, so.
Sure. I thought that that would be helpful, as I was sitting here thinking about it, to take an existing street and say, okay, this is what I have, but the danger, of course, is if somebody that lives on that street doesn't know what's going on, they could, you could have an angry phone call, right?
We've done it before, we haven't had that come up yet, but, you know, we try to select the sites publicly, and again, keep it fairly high level. But it is very helpful, I think, when we've done this in other communities, so look forward to bringing that back.
Another thing that is an idea that may be helpful for us is, you know, we talked a little bit about that most of this code language will be kind of the minimum required to meet the legislation, the direction from the legislation. But where we do have choices, it'd be kind of nice for us as a group to be able to say, okay, in this category, and whether that category is under middle housing or STEP, or it's more of a, maybe that's not the right organization, but in this category, here are some choices that we have, right? And if the choices note everything, then the choices note everything, but at least understanding. For example, one of my big questions in all of this is, what can we do? So can we put, where can we put in height restrictions on things, and where can we not put height restrictions in? And that's a big one for me, because I think that can impact an existing neighborhood. But the other question I have that's kind of tangential to that is, if we put in restrictions or we have existing restrictions that come in conflict with these new requirements, who wins? So in other words, if we said, you can't build anything over 24 feet tall, but by saying that, then someone can't build an ADU that's 1,000 square feet.
Yep.
Then who, what's the, what's the priority there? Who is the preeminent, who wins?
Yeah.
Because that's going to happen, right? Tree retention, you name it, that's going to happen.
Well, that's part of the context analysis, is to try to find out where that tension is and try to avoid it. But I think, in my mind, it would likely result, well, first off, I will say, I don't think we're anticipating any changes to height levels. I think it's 35 feet right now, and I wouldn't expect we'd change that. There are some limitations, I think, in the ADU bill, you have to allow 24 feet or whatnot. But we would go through that exercise to figure that out, because we don't want to come up with standards that just don't work. But I think what we would look for is ways that the proposal could be modified to fit the lot. For example, if you have a 5,000-square-foot lot, your three units would be way smaller than if you had an acre, and so trying to figure out how things can scale to the appropriate lot sizes so that you don't have those conflicts. But at the end of the day, if you propose something and it doesn't meet lot coverage, you don't get approval. I mean, simple as that.
I think we should continue to talk a little bit about parking.
Yeah.
Just because, you know, I think people are going to be concerned if they see somebody in a neighborhood that's traditionally been quiet and not that many cars, and now all of a sudden, there are several ADUs going in, where are those people parking?
Right.
You know, how are we going to address the complaints or the potential for that problem? Another one that I'm curious about is, you can't answer this, I'm sure, but how are HOA rules applied? In other words, if the city doesn't even know where the HOAs are, which I understand why, and, or if they know that there's an HOA, but they don't have access to the language, and then somebody comes in and applies to build an ADU, but the covenants restrict that, is there any process that, is there any way for anybody to know that or not? I mean, because we were saying, don't worry, HOAs are going to protect you, but if we don't even know that they're there...
It's a real easy step, we just require a title report as part of the supplemental process.
Good. I'll just say, in my neighborhood, which is, so when I walk my dog, it's about a mile, it's a loop, it goes through an older neighborhood, a newer neighborhood, there, I walk by one ADU that's existing and two that are currently being built, just in that zone. So I think suggesting that it's not happening or not going to happen might not be accurate.
You must live in a hotspot, because if I pulled our statistics out of our permit database on ADUs, it's for all purposes, from what I see, is it's really not happening. I appreciate to know that there are clusters of them.
Yeah.
And we'd be happy to provide the statistics and graph it over the years, if you want to see how many are actually being built.
I guess my point is just, it really can actually happen.
It can, yeah, it can actually happen, and it might increase over time, right? It can become more of a trend.
And some places, it's, I mean, like, here, where I'm, where we live, I think it's going to be fine, you know? It's a couple, as long as the parking's not a problem.
Yeah.
And they're being done right, they're being done in the backyard kind of a situation, the trees are mostly, it's being done fine, but it will happen.
Yeah.
Of course it does, too.
Yeah. I'll be interested to see, the next time we talk about this, what we do next.
Yeah, thanks for those comments.
Anybody else?
There's one that's under construction, very close to me as well, and I know I live far away from him.
Well, now I'm going to be driving by your homes, so I'll wave when I go by.
My concern is not private citizens building ADUs, my concern is developers taking advantage of things like this and starting to stack a thousand of them next to each other in a way that absolutely makes no sense.
Well, and I think that's our charge, is to make the rules predictable and so that there, you know, there isn't the opportunity for that to happen. And I think if we just implemented the middle code, what you described could happen.
And historically, they've been built by homeowners for extended family. The more recent one that I've heard a lot of is that people are moving their parents or, you know, in-laws or whatever into their homes in ADUs, right? The biggest change that's opening the door up for a difference there is that you can condominiumize them and sell them. But some might argue that that presents an opportunity for an entry-level home for somebody who wants to move to the city.
I'm sorry, that does remind me of one other comment. I think we should include in this conversation the, what's the right way to say it, the Airbnb factor. In other words, I think for many of us, an ADU, even if it's condominiumized and sold to a young couple or an old couple or me, right, whatever, is one thing, but if all that people are doing is building it to put it on Airbnb or VRBO or whatever, and that creates a lot of problems in the community, and so I don't think we should ignore that as part of this conversation.
Yeah, one thing the commission could recommend is that a policy be added to the comprehensive plan, the land use section or the housing section of the comprehensive plan, related to the city creating or somehow managing vacation rentals or limiting vacation rentals in the city. It's a topic that's come up over the years, it's a big lift for us to start a program, and it requires staff to monitor it, so that is an implication when we have limited budget and limited staffing, what is your preference? Where do you want those staff to be applied?
I think even if we just put rules in place that then are available when there's a problem, that would be even a step to consider.
Right to enforce, yeah.
Yeah, we can take a look at that. Unfortunately, some cities have fairly recently come up with some pretty good rules. I think for a while, cities were kind of confused about what to do, but Boise, I think, is one example I recall, so we can pull out some of those and bring those forward.
Good conversation, thank you both.
Appreciate it very much. Okay, let's move on to our public comment, agenda-related public comment for this evening. Anybody in the room like to make any comments about what we talked about in the agenda this evening?
Hello again. I didn't have any prepared remarks for this evening, I'm just kind of jotting out thoughts as I went along, but one thing that tonight's presentation made, certainly made clear to me, was that there really isn't a need for this proposed urban residential zoning in the flum if, as a result of the new law, a single acre presently-zoned R4 is now magically R12, or potentially R16 if the affordable units are counted. So, R4 is already R12, even if you, even without imposing some urban residential zoning overlay to this whole thing. So in my mind, that should be off the table. The overriding thought I had was that for the Planning Commission and eventually the City Council is to control what you can control, because this new law certainly leaves some elements out of your ability to exercise any kind of domain over what's going to happen. But you certainly will have tools available, the city will have tools available to it to appropriately manage implementation. And I, and excuse me if I have gotten, understood some of this wrong, but I would, based on what I heard earlier, definitely count ADUs toward the maximum density per lot. I would say that, that should be kind of a no-brainer. And then use rezoning criteria and what in the presentation are euphemistically called foreign-based standards, to kind of control what happens on the ground. Florida area ratio is mentioned, that's, I'm just reading right off of the presentation. Parking requirements, means of access to dwellings, setbacks, open space requirements, buffers, and then to the extent that there are things you could put in that govern transition from the surrounding built environment. So that's just my overall, you know, thoughts about, like, if I was sitting in your shoes about how I would be thinking of trying to, you know, put some parameters around this as you went forward. Regarding David's comments about, and some of this discussion that just happened about what will actually be built, I'm not so sanguine as David. I think the new law and the new facts on the ground will attract, particularly in Sammamish, will attract new developers who specialize in denser and higher development, and the developer's going to adjust. They're not, if you're just speaking to the crew that's currently building in Sammamish, yeah, they just want to do what they know how to do, but... They just want to do what they know how to do, but new builders, new developers are going to come in who specialize in this stuff, and if larger and higher and denser is allowed, that's what's ultimately going to happen. That's my fear, anyway. So those are my comments for tonight, kind of informal. Sorry if they're a little bit scattered, but I appreciate the chance to share them. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Mary, are you next?
Hi, Mary Victor, Samamish since 2000. Good discussions, really good thinking, as always. I think you guys are always up to the task, so thank you for all that you do. I wanted to go back to the thing from Wayne with AHBL and talk a little bit about the stormwater amendments, because I'm quite concerned about them. So in the map that I had, I showed you that. This is Tamarack, kind of goes the other way. But I live down here at the bottom, right where the steep slopes are. So I live where my house is half on landslide, half not. I'm at the toe of the slope. There's been landslides, there's been water put in above, there's been the city trying to go ahead and use dispersion or infiltration trenches right at the bottom of the slope or after it. And it doesn't work. I can, I guess I'll put together pictures to show you how horribly it doesn't work. And then we're even above more steep slopes, because those steep slopes are down here, and there's kind of a stream, and there's other things going on. So I just wanted to show you Inglewood. So Inglewood, this is Inglewood line, this side of the parkway. You can see the landslide hazard area, which connects with the ones from Tamarack, because they're together. The yellow everywhere, if you took the steep slope at the bottom, whichever way is down, which mostly is this way, and you let people infiltrate, you will have exactly the problem that was caused in Inglewood and in Tamarack in 2013 before I started speaking, where they did five emergency surface water ordinances, and they said, hey, this isn't working. What do we need to do? So we've marched on for 10 years now to get the code that we have. So I don't know if you tried to read my gobbledygook email today. I tried to copy and paste the codes that we have existing that need to be tied together particularly for historic plaits. If you read the 1,132-page King County Surface Water Design Manual for 2021, and I don't read all the way through it, I do Ctrl+F, and I search for words like "infeasible" and things like that, you will find that it says, if you're going to do anything in a landslide or erosion hazard area, and you want to have steep slopes involved in that, which we now have online, thank you, David Pyle and city staff, and we have it in the maps, and they're a little bit different, but they're kind of close, that you really want to use an acceptable discharge point. You don't want to be using dispersion, infiltration, any of the low-impact development best management practices. You don't, those don't even apply in the areas. So whatever happens with the stormwater code, I would really like it to address that, because there's just so many problems that we fought for 10, 15, 20 years, and we just can't go back, because somebody wants to do something nice at the bottom of the hill. It needs to go to an acceptable discharge point. That is, there's, all that's in that thousand pages of the King County manual, so I'd recommend that we do that. So I'm still really concerned about the only applying to steep slopes. You can't get rid of the erosion and landslide, and there are going to be geo-hazards when David's critical area code comes in. Then for clarifying infiltration procedures, I liked how it was described. But again, we shouldn't be doing infiltration testing anywhere we've got landslide, erosion, or steep slopes. So I think whatever they're doing, if they want to do it for the other parts, that's fine, but we need to think about the lakes, which are also critical, or, excuse me, critical drainage areas around Pine and Beaver Lake, and we need to think about the critical areas. And then I wanted, I wanted to speak a little bit to the housing things, because we're having really good discussion on that. So the duplex discussion is really great. That's the fastest way to get cheaper housing, is you have one lot, you get two units, half your cost for the land. One of the reasons people don't build ADUs is you have to build the sink, the house, you have to build everything that you do for a house, but you get such small square footage out of it, your cost per square foot is very high. A lot of people can't do it. One thing I think we should look at the code, and it kind of got in there in Development Rights Phase 2, I'm not sure how, is it says the front door has to face the street. But I can think of lots of places I've been where there's a house, and if you renovated it to make another unit in the back, you'd have a door hidden or sideways. A door maybe you'd even keep open for your office during the summer, because people, like, people don't normally have their front door open, because people just walk in. But it's a side door, that way you could have a side or a back entrance, and that you could build like a split unit or an ADU or an office quarter or a place for a nanny or something or other. So that code got added, and I've learned from all the code I've read and the stuff I do in Montana, that having the front door being really restrictive is like kind of a really bad idea. I think that could be pulled out, because it was just put in. So that's the one thing that I see for sure. The other thing I don't hear is Paul Stickney used to say DDS for different, diverse, and smaller housing. I haven't heard anybody say the word "smaller housing." Like, one of the reasons everything's so expensive is we have pretty big, giant houses, and you heard David Pyle say tonight that a lot of stuff gets built with 3,000 or almost 4,000 square feet. My house is 3,880 square feet with the basement thing. I can't even vacuum one floor when I moved in and I was younger. Like, I have to spread out my vacuuming, and when I'm older, there are stairs everywhere. I cannot get in my house. So I'd have to build something where I could have a level or sell the house, and then there's nothing to buy. So I think those are the things that we need to think about, and I think even the things I've seen come from STCA, who's doing the first development in town center. I'm not seeing smaller units, and if we really want to have the units and do the housing and not affect the neighborhoods and have a nice thing, we need to put as much density as we can in the town center, and even if we're not supposed to talk about that tonight, those can be smaller units, and if they're smaller, they'll probably cost less, which will put you more in affordability, so you'll have workforce housing and those other things. And if it's more loaded, John Backman said, you know, we're going to be putting steep slopes and stuff. You shouldn't be building in the critical areas. You never should have been building there. That's what the Transfer Development Rights Program is, and if we can get that, you can put it in centers or other neighborhoods or places where it belongs. It shouldn't be going as, oh, and I do have the map from 2016 with the blue vacant sites to show you where it is, because I think that's very visual, and I don't usually put it out, because it's a secret. It went into the city and developers get it, and then they go develop those parcels. But I think that you shouldn't be building in the critical areas, and if you are, the critical, like, if you have a big lot and this is all critical, you can only build in this, so it should be much smaller. So I think there are ways to move forward. I think the stuff that we're doing and talking about is really good. I like the conversations, but I just really don't want us, if we have something that's useful, let's not get rid of it, like the maps, until we have something better. And I don't want anything that's working now that we took a long time to get, to get wiped out by the new code, because it's either not understanding critical areas or cross things between the codes. So thank you for listening, and thanks for the great meeting.
Thanks, Mary.
Have to put on my glasses. Good evening. I'm Barbara Yarington. I'm with TriPoint Homes. I heard you guys wanted some new people up here to talk to you, and you were bored being all by yourselves every night, so here I am. So I've been watching these meetings, and this is going to be a little scattered, because I'm trying to address what David Pyle brought up, which is also a curveball to us, so bear with me. But I've been watching these meetings with the city of Samamish, as well as other numerous jurisdictions. I sit on a lot of boards and councils with jurisdictions, the master builders, all throughout King, Pierce, Snohomish, and Kitsap County. And the common thread in all of these jurisdictions is that there's a housing problem everyone's facing. How do we provide housing for our citizens? People want to move here. They can't afford it. They can't afford to sell their house, because they can't afford to buy a new house. And interest rates, and, you know, we all know that there are many, many layers that go into that. Cost of the land, regulations, et cetera. But you, as the planning commission, are tasked with vetting out the land and creating the most efficient use of that land and optimizing its use to meet the needs of your citizens and this jurisdiction. I am tasked with the job of building the housing under the regulations that you all set for me. And whether we like it or not, that does make us partners, in a way. But anyway, specifically, I came here to talk about the site that you are going to look at as urban residential, which with its infrastructure in place there, it's, everything is there. That is a site that has been underutilized and is optimal for inefficient use of land. Or whatever zoning classification you make it, it is ripe for ups zoning. The things that that's going to do, though, not necessarily what was talked about tonight, but in ups zoning a site like that, is you have an economic development and workforce that you're trying to provide housing for. A site like that will provide a higher density, whether it's a layer take-down from the town center or however you're going to do it with duplexes or townhomes, that will provide housing for that work base that's going to serve your economic development. It's near a transit base. And preferably will allow for duplexes. I'm sorry this is scattered. I want to address a little bit about what was talked about tonight with ADUs and all that. We are a builder that would love to build duplexes for you. Love it. We do not build ADUs. We, as a market rate, for-profit company, we build what people want to buy. And people want duplexes, they want single-family detached housing, they want townhomes. I can't speak for all the developers. I'm just speaking for us and most of the publicly traded ones. But nobody wants a duplex with four little ADUs around it. We're not going to be able to sell that. And we're not in the business of building something that we can't sell. Now, with that said, people will go and build them after the fact, and I think somebody hit on that they built them for multi-generational living. So, and you might want to check the permits on the ones in your neighborhood, make sure they have those. Just saying. But anyway, so as a developer and for what we're talking, that's not what we're about. I am one of the developers that has been talked to. I sit on councils with numerous jurisdictions, and I opine this. Duplexes and townhomes for the missing middle is really what the single-family developers are going to be looking to build. We're not looking for apartments. We're not looking for five units on a lot, et cetera. So I just want to put your mind at ease on that. Anyway, I think that's it. I'm going to cut out the rest of the stuff that I had in here, and I'm available for any questions.
Thanks, Barbara. Anybody else in the room? About online?
We have two hands raised online. Mr. Eastman, I will go ahead and promote you to panelist.
James Eastman. Eastlake, Samamish Parkway. Yeah, so I don't think it'd be your guys' job, definitely some hard subjects to take on tonight. And I feel like maybe the state has what they're pushing, and then we have Samamish's, you know, certain level of what we all expect in our city and in our neighborhoods. And there's a major disconnect between the two, and from the landowner point of view, I feel like, you know, we own land or I own land, and I could just be caught in this major crossfire of trying to balance what's right. And I say that because, for instance, my neighbor, his house just went up on the market. It's a 6,000-square-foot lot in Waterbrook. Waterbrook's done a wonderful job. You wouldn't even know the lots in there, 5,500 or 6,000 square-foot lots. But the lots, you know, it's a 3,500-square-foot house. It's 20 years old, you know? Some of the ceiling heights and stuff aren't what you'd find in a modern house. But it's selling for 2.3 million. And all the lots, I would think, in Samamish are, you know, at least in the last 25 years, are done using net zoning. And there's data out there. I mean, anybody could probably run a calculation or look at the property data using the assessor's website and average the lot size built in Samamish over the past 20, 25 years. And I would guess it's probably right around 6,000-square-foot lot in R4. But, you know, as we saw tonight, you know, that could be up all the way to 11,000 square feet for a lot size. So my question to everyone in the room and that I'm putting out there is, why is there such a big difference between what 11,000-square-foot lot should be in an R4 to what's actually getting built over the last 20 years if we're using net zoning, which we are? Like, where did all that land go? You know, that's a value to whoever you're selling it to. We talked about it a little bit. You know, it might be an open space. It might be in between critical areas, so we just, you know, make a critical areas tract. It might be a buffer from a roadway. It might be an odd-shaped lot. We don't know, but we have the data to say, on average, you know, 5,000 to 6,000 to 7,000 square-foot lots are being built in Samamish, but in reality, it could be on the way up to 11,000. So there's a certain efficiency factor there, just to get to 6,000-square-foot lot. Now we're talking about potentially going to 11,000. I don't know if I even understood the agenda right or heard the meeting right, but 11,000-square-foot lot, that would allow a duplex, because we're so scared of these regulations coming from the state. Yeah, we don't think, no one will build a third unit, because it doesn't make sense. I mean, inclusionary zoning to work is like 10 to 20%, while building a fourth unit would be like 50% inclusionary zoning. Not profitable, not going to work. The reality, under this new house bill, someone's only going to build two units on a lot, and we're saying, before we had a 6,000-square-foot lot or even a 5,000-square-foot lot, let's just make the future lot size potentially 11,000. So what we've done is we basically are doubling the minimum lot size, and then you have to look at that efficiency factor. So if you are trying to get to 11,000-square-foot lot, what is that really? Is it 15,000, 16,000, 17,000 square-foot of land that you need to get to 11,000-square-foot lot? And if we can do a $2.2 million single-family home on a 5,500-square-foot lot, like doubling that lot size to go 11,000 square-foot to build a duplex, it just, it doesn't make a lot of sense financially, mathematically. The numbers aren't just there, and I think we're potentially going to do that because of what the state is pushing through. So I'd encourage you guys to just kind of do the math. I mean, David Pyle touched on it quite a bit with, you know, no one's going to build townhomes or this or that, because it's just not financially doable. But one of the end consequences for this, and I talk about it all the time, is land is a limited commodity, and it's a scarcity. And by going to such a big lot size, you might just get massive mansions built from here on out, because there's just too much stuff to consider. And it's just way more feasible to just build a really big house on an 11,000-square-foot lot, and then you add the efficiency factors, and it might be well above that. So it might just be half-acre lots with, you know, $4 million houses, which I don't know if that's the best use of land, given the housing supply issue in the state. So what we really need is, I don't know, to work with landowners and come up with just awesome master plan, unit development code, to really incorporate good design with our remaining land and not just have it be a big free-for-all that the state is pushing through. I'm not sure. How much time do I have? I can't see the clock.
30 seconds.
All right. So Mark, I have an Airbnb down on the parkway. I have connected to the lake. I have connection to the trail. The only reason I have it is because my tenant moved out, and I'm kind of, don't really know what my future's going to be, so I have it set up as an Airbnb. And it's tough. Like, I would probably be better off just renting it out or selling it if, I don't think an Airbnb in Samamish is really that profitable with land values and with housing values. It just, I wouldn't be so scared of that, like, you know, if you can condominiumize something, just sell it off. You're going to make a ton more money than trying to keep an Airbnb busy all through the eight, nine winter months here in Samamish, especially with the value that the school district would add to have somebody permanently occupied. It just, it just doesn't pencil out, so I wouldn't be so concerned about that. Thanks.
Thanks, James.
Mr. Stickney, I will go ahead and promote you to panelist.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Enjoyed both.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Enjoyed both parts of the meeting. Lots of ground covered. I'll work to keep this on the shorter side, but have some good infill comments. PSRC did a study in early 2023 before the newer House Bill 1110, I believe, was finished in HOAs. And their study was about 2.3 million parcels could be developed. That's when they were talking about transit and some different zonings, that was only going to translate into about 200,000 on the ground without counting HOAs. I passed that out there. If any of you want to look it up, Puget Sound Regional Council, it's called HB 1110 Development and Redevelopment Impacts. I think you'd find it quite interesting. HOAs is a savior unless the state takes it away. There's just no easier way to say it. And I didn't hear it mentioned tonight. I don't know if it's gone away, but I seem to recall over and above HOAs not being able to be developed, the city has the ability to exempt 20 to 25% of the land in the city, and you couple that with critical areas, then in essence, unless the state law changes, then most of the neighborhoods, which most of the people really do want to keep as-is, would not have much change. And it goes to, I'm not making this about me, but what I suggested for the comp plan, I think, really is real. You optimize all sizes in town center with market rate housing for 500 to a million two, some high-end condos and townhouses, and affordable housing start to meet needs that are long overdue to be met, and plan the rest of the city and really get it right over the next, you know, 10 years. So build and start to build shortages that are massive internally, nothing to do with meeting regional need, totally meeting local needs. I know somebody locally who sold a $2.5 million house couldn't stay. They bought a 1.3 million Rambler outside of the city further away because there were no single-level units. And I believe that condos, well-constructed, have sold well in Kirkland, Mercer Island, Bellevue, well-done, not problems with EFS and all the old days and the, all the big problems with all the lawsuits. But I think ownership and single-level living, quiet, well-constructed, well-located, have an option to fill a lot of housing we need priced from 700, 800 up to a million two and higher. Now, on some numbers. David Pyle knows this. He was on the, on the email strings. I did a public record request and got quite a bit of new data recently on construction because it had been two or three years since I had updated that. I had it all through 2021, and I got it all updated. And I reserve a placeholder to correct this. If, if I have something wrong, it's not intentional. Here's some interesting facts. Since 2018, how many duplexes have been started? How many apartments? How many townhouses? The answer? Goose egg, zero. Now, STCA's Brownstone West is going to change that, but for five years, nada, zilch, the big zero. ADUs, interesting. I've got some ADU data that goes quite a ways back. It's probably the same stuff that David Pyle was talking about. Let me just take some of the more recent years. In 2019, there was one permitted ADU. 2020, there were two. 2021, there were four. 2022, there were six. 2023, there were six. And year-to-date, 2024, two. So some, just not, not a whole lot. What about, interestingly enough, lots in the pipeline? And, and multifamily projects in a pipeline? What's happening there? Well, as of recently, a couple weeks ago, there were 75 lots in the short plat, and I think most of you know that short plaits are nine lots or less. Of those 75 that are in the pipeline to be developed, the lots that haven't been finalized yet, 17 of them were started in 2019 and earlier, and 59 in 2020-plus. Consider, back in 2017, when the council put on the first moratorium, which ultimately led to measures to create volume over capacity and all kinds of issues for four to five years. I won't go down that rabbit hole, but I will say that at that time when that started, there were 900 lots in that pipeline. Look at that. Consider that. Outside of the town center projects, which we've heard a lot about, and last night's park commission meeting was excellent, by the way, if none of you got a chance to watch that, get onto YouTube or find the video and watch the town center and transportation stuff that was presented to parks last night. There was new information there. I found that a very useful refresher and a comprehensive meeting and a good job. But outside of town center, two applications on UZDPs, how many plaits or subdivisions are there with 10 lots or more in the city? How many in the pipeline? Uno, one, 12 lots. There's not a lot happening. Oh, that was a play on words. I, I didn't mean to do that. Now, how about single-family housing? Well, this is the part that is a little bit murky, and I'm not sure I quite have it right, so I reserve a placeholder to correct it if I'm off slightly. In 2021, the city closed about 103, or final permitted, about 103 single-family homes. There are still five open. In 2022, the city permitted, finalized, about 108 homes. There are nine still open. In 2023, the city permitted 70 homes. There are still 35 open. And in 2024, the city permitted 11 homes, eight open. Okay, there's my numbers. I'm done. Have a good evening.
Thanks for keeping it on the short side, Paul. Anybody else?
No more comments.
Okay, before we adjourn, John, did you have a quick commissioner's report?
Yeah, I just wanted to call out that yesterday, Haseem and Sayed, and even joined by David Pyle, attended the Arch Housing 101 session. It was about two and a half hours, maybe three hours long. Really super informative. I'm not going to get into any details because I can't remember them all, but if Haseem or Sayed wanted to say a word. The one thing we did learn that we didn't know was that our esteemed Planning Community Service Director is an executive board member of Arch. So we can look to him for expertise. But, but I will say that this Samamish's participation in Arch, I think, is a huge, huge benefit. They even called out the Little Cottage Habitat for Humanity project out on 228th. So it was, it was great. They moved the presentation along very, very nicely, so we didn't get too bored. So you guys wanted to chime in?
There are quite a number of elected officials, city council members, very well-attended. Something like 30, 40 people were there. Very informative.
I agree with John and Sayed. Definitely, it was time, very well-managed, and it was very informative for me to, to just learn about the good things that Arch is doing to, to the community, to the metropolitan community. And Sayed made a very good comment to them about sharing the success stories from the different developments that they do. And I believe that a lot of the things that they do, they can fit very well here in this community, and it will help us with a lot of the issues we are trying to solve. I still disagree with cutting those lots to tiny sizes, but I, I'd love to see Arch doing some work here as well. And Habitat for Humanities was, was a good example that they shared, and it's something I drive by, if not every day, every other day.
What was interesting, the site is brand-new. When you look from the out, when you look from the outside, you never know that this is an affordable housing complex. On the bottom, there are a lot of agencies that they work with the public. And then on the top, there are 250 units. And you look at it from the outside, it looks brand-new complex that you never thought that this is an affordable housing complex that the city has worked with the Arch and, and the other entities to, to create that and fully occupy it.
Great. Thank you, guys, for doing that and for keeping us informed. One last thing, this was a little different format. I'd encourage everybody to take a moment and think about what you liked, what you didn't like, and give Evan some feedback. Would someone like to move to adjourn?
Someone move? Seconded.
It's been moving secondly adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If no, thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.